Is he actually muted? Jim, can he mute his phone call? Or is that something that you as administrator have to unmute him?
I already did that, yes. I have to unmute him and I did that. And then he has to unmute himself.
Oh, okay.
Isn't technology great?
Yeah. He's right there.
It is awesome.
That last part's the key. Lee, are you there now?
We've got progress.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. There you go.
Very good, okay. Pushed the wrong buttons.
All right. Okay, so this is on for public hearing. This was a matter that was taken at our last meeting. Lee did submit, um, he submitted a correct plan, a revised plan with showing parking for three or four employees plus patron parking. And he was showing an expansion area in the event that there's a retail use on the site as well. Those are the notes I had and it did go off a county referral. So the public hearing is scheduled for this evening at 7:01.
And we have a time?
Yes, we do.
Board, any questions of Mr. Harding before we open?
Excuse me? I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't hear you.
We're just making sure the board didn't have any questions, Lee, before we open the public hearing.
Okay, okay, very good.
Jerry, I have a question.
Jerry, have a question.
They know effective immediately and based on notices and health advisories issued by federal, state, and local officials related to the COVID-19 personal planning role conducted public hearing by video conferences permitted by New York State Department of law and executive order 232,001. For Lee Horning for a commercial rental space in an existing building at 1496 Route 9, Town Row. For the public health and safety concerns, the public will not be permitted to attend or go to a location. Report member, Barman Head or staff will be situated or in any other location. The public will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment during the public hearing. Take further notice of the public hearing or available on this website. Take further notice, the comments, the public, the public comment portion of the public hearing can be sent through Zoom later conference meeting of the minute meeting. Board, questions? Public questions?
Anybody in the public have any comment? Raise your hand, your virtual hand and I will unmute you if you do. A number of people attending, but I don't see any indication regarding this applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm checking through. I don't see interest. Nope. No indication, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Best thing to do is close the public hearing. Can I hear you?
Nope. I think Jerry had a question. Jerry, did you have a question?
No, I do not.
Okay, sorry.
Jim, this is Ann. I do have a question. I did not get a copy of the updated site plan for this, but I assume that the future storage and the future expansion, which was shown on the plan last month, was, was taken off of this site plan?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Jim, I also didn't receive a new site plan.
There's an electronic version of it at the, on the webpage where the planning board agenda is.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought these went out to everybody in your packets, but mostly they didn't. It's barrier revision date of 1/26/2020.
What other questions of Mr. Harding? If that, what would you like to do?
What also should be acknowledged, this is a type action under Seeker.
Yes. Maybe we should put that in form of a motion. Do I have a motion to consider the application for Lee Horning for this commercial enterprise to be a type two action under Seeker?
I'll make a motion to declare this a type two action under Seeker.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
To grant type two action for Seeker for project for Lee Horning and 1496 Route 9, do the motions are second?
I think they're seconded.
Second.
You're a chairman?
Yep.
Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is really not too controversial, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Vote.
Aye.
Motion carries, I think. What else would you like to, to inform Mr. Harding?
I've heard everything.
Mrs. Meredith, I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Horning's site plan.
Motion's been made to approve the plan for Lee Horning at 1496 Route 9, Row. Other motions, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made, any further discussion? If, now, to call the roll, please.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Bouchard?
Yes.
Let's see, Mrs. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes. I have some motion carries. Anything further that you'd like to do?
I'll make a motion to have the chairman and one member sign the site plan, the final site plan when submitted to the town. I'm, I'm thinking this isn't a Mylar.
It is not.
Right.
Okay, motion's been made for the chairman and another member of the board to sign a drawing when presented to the town. Other motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion? This one also is not too controversial. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Vote. Motion carries. Mr. Harding, thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Have a good night.
You too. Good night, everybody.
Okay.
One I have for this evening is Arrowhead Meadows. Those, do we have someone?
Yes, we do. I just gotta find Travis here on this. There he is. Travis, are you there?
You hear me, Jim? I'm on my cell phone, you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Are you still wanting to share a screen?
Yeah, if it's convenient to do so, it'd be good.
All right, so last time, we made you a panelist to do that or co-panelist?
I think so. Yeah, something along those lines. Give it a try. I'll let you know when I can see it on my end.
Okay.
I think I've gotta be a co-host.
Yeah, trying to remember how I did that.
All hyperdeputy research.
Okay. One here. Lawyer to a camp, right?
Sure, give that, whoop, there we go. Can you still hear me?
Yeah, can hear you.
All right, yes. Okay, so now it says host disabled participant screen sharing. I am a panelist, I can see you all there.
Okay, I'm going to a co-host. That's what we have.
There you go.
I'll try that.
And there we go, good, thank you.
All right, there you go.
Yep. Great. All right, appreciate it, thanks, Jim. Goodie. Ready for me to get going?
Yep.
Travis Mitchell with Environmental Design Partnership. Thanks for having me. I have Mary Beth Slevin on the line, I believe. She's an attorney that's assisting with the project. Also on the line, I think, is Luke Michaels of the Michaels Group, who will ultimately be building the homes here, presuming we, we get approval on the project. So just, I'm gonna go through some of these pretty quickly. We saw most of them last month. Project site location on a, on an aerial map. This is a 22, just over 22 acre parcel with frontage on Bluebird Road. You've got Route 9, of course, over here, I've shown it in the dashed yellow line. Here's Bluebird Road on the north and, and Route 32 to the west. Town zoning map, we, in the R1 and R2 zone, primarily, primarily in R1. Here's the, the site footprint overlaid on that zoning map. Again, if you have any questions, I'll slow down, but otherwise, I'm gonna go through these, we've seen them before. This is the layout that you saw at our last meeting. The only substantive change to the layout that we discussed was including a provision that would allow the HOA to, to have a, a trail through HOA lands at some point in the future. We did, you can see on this slide, we did slide lots 25 and 26 apart in order to create HOA land that touches the, the right of way. And of course, there is also HOA land behind these units. And I did add a note, I don't think it made it on the set that, that you have in front of you, but we did add a note to the plans that, that reflects the fact that the homeowners association, so have the ability to designate a pedestrian pathway on the homeowners association land in the future, which I believe is what, what you had asked for. This is that, again, exact same layout, except that we've, we've slid these two lots apart here in this location. We talked last time about the combined traffic study that was done for this project, the immediate project south of it, and then also the Jacoby Farms project. Hopefully you, we did receive back and hopefully you have a copy of Greman Peterson's review of that traffic study. They effectively signed off, if you will, on the, on the negligible impacts for this project. They did, they had some comments that were limited to the Jacoby Farms project, but, but none on, on, on this one. We also talked last time, again, this isn't new, but just to refresh your memory, this is the Arrowhead Meadows project here to the north. We talked last time about the cross easements that would be in place to give this project the ability to be constructed with a through street and a looping waterline, independent of the timeframe for constructing the project immediately to the south. We also showed you the ability to share stormwater facilities between the two projects, which is essentially shown in the green, the green shading on this map. Again, nothing new, but just wanted to point that out. It's, we did talk about that last time. Also, again, discussed last time, there was a, a point raised about mail distribution facilities. We have shown on the plans a, a common distribution mailbox here in this location off the Anspur Road with some parking spaces there. However, we have been and will continue to be in discussion with the, the postmaster, the local postmaster, as to whether they'd like a, a common centralized mail distribution or simply mailboxes at, at each lot. So whichever they prefer is, of course, what we will go forward with, that we have shown on the, on the site plan to at least accommodate it, that, that common distribution facility. As far as the approval process goes, we reviewed the preliminary plat with you. This is our third meeting looking at that plat. We were here in December, here in January, and now here in February. We submitted the detailed preliminary plat plans in early December, provided you an update earlier this month with those few changes that, that you had requested and also responding to the town designated engineer on stormwater, LaBerge Group, responding to their comments in early February. Last month, you initiated the, the required county referral and I know they took it up at their meeting last week. I haven't heard what the outcome was. I presume they'll, they'll defer to local, to the local planning board, but you know, we, we have time to hear back from them at this point. I expect we will any day now. You also initiated Seeker coordinated review last month and you pushed the plans out to different agencies, entities for their review. That includes Greman Peterson on the traffic and as I mentioned, they provided a sign off for this portion of the project a couple of weeks ago. And the LaBerge Group reviewed stormwater. They also provided effectively a sign off last week. Paul Joseph with Town Highway Department got comments to us late last week. They're relatively minor, we'll address those in a, in a letter back to Paul. I don't see any issues there. And lastly, on water, I haven't heard from Jesse Fish yet, but expect we will at some point. It's pretty basic water distribution system, so I don't imagine he'll have many comments, but we'll address any that, that he has. So at, at this point, I open it up to any questions or comments. I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be in a position to schedule a public hearing tonight when we're all said and done.
Chairman, I can confirm Travis, I think, pretty much updated, got everything. The coordinated review did go off of Seeker. The only agency we heard back from was D C and they consented to you being lead agent, but we did not hear anything from any of the other agencies. And I think, although the 30-day timeframe hasn't expired yet, it's gonna pretty soon. And because I sent that out the end of January, so we have to, we have to February it here. But Travis indicated there's still more reviews, so, but we're on track.
Travis, have you considered taking on a discussion of connecting this project to the sewer system?
Yeah, so that's something that's, yeah, that's a good question and it's an ongoing discussion, I guess. We, you know, we've, this was first brought up to us in, in December and we spoke about it with the board last month. And you know, my position remains the same. If, if centralized sewer is affordable, then you know, it makes, it makes sense to consider it, but it needs to be affordable. I've been provided some information a month or so ago from the town on the original map plan and report. And you know, it was done three years ago, just late last week. There was some correspondence back and forth, basically asking what else was necessary to consider it. And quite frankly, I've gotta see what the costs are gonna be and, you know, I'm not involved in that sewer project, so I, I can't predict or project what those costs are gonna be. If, if the town, you know, is serious about residential properties connecting, there needs to be a clear and concise answer on the cost. It, it, it can't be on me to predict those costs. So again, I'm, I'm open to it, but I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to it slowing down this project if, if, you know, so.
If I could comment on that, and that's too bad, you know, Carla's supposed to join us. She's tied up on another meeting, another call, but she's going to be joining us during this meeting for sure. But my understanding about the sewer issue is that the town is working towards being able to provide what Travis asked, and that is a, you know, a definitive cost. The reason why it's taking some time is that it's kind of a, it's kind of a moving target in that the more units that come on in the system, the more the price drops. You know, the more usage that occurs in the system, the more the price drops. And the, the town has had some users come on lately, or will have some coming on, that will drop that price and potentially into a range that, you know, would be more affordable. So we're, my understanding is we're waiting to see what that definitive will be based on those new users being into the system and lowering that, that, you know, per user charge. So that's, that's the best I can explain it. I think Carla's here. Good. Carla, are you there? Carla? Carla, I see you on the list. Carla? See here. Where'd she go? She was there, I'm not seeing things. We've got tonight? Um.
Jim, do you have the, while you're looking for Carla, do you have the ability to let Mary Beth Slevin speak? I see.
Yeah, I can say that. Mary Beth, I unmute you.
Thank you. I think that the, the issue is with a project, we need to understand what the cost is currently. And unfortunately, we do appreciate that this is, to a certain extent, a moving target and that the town is trying to make sure that they provide the information, but also projected information for the future. But in order for this project to really be able to move ahead, it has to know currently what it's looking at in terms of costs. And it needs to be able to evaluate those costs for a potential connection to the sewer system, essentially as against an amortized cost of doing septic systems, because that's really what the comparison is. And without being able to do that and having that information from the town, really have an inability to be able to make that comparison. So what we're looking to do, if I'm wrong, is to, in short term, get a sense of what the current analysis of the cost is and then allow Travis to evaluate that based on what he's able to, to know what the septic cost.
Yeah, we, we do have Carla on with us now. Carla, are you there?
Yes, folks, I just got on. I, I heard the last 30 seconds.
We're, we're talking about the possibility of adding the Arrowhead Meadows subdivision into the sewer system and we're at the same old, you know, walking point. You know, it's too expensive, we can't do it, so where's the town stand on the cost? And, you know, so that's where we stand. And I explained based on the correspondence I seen, that it's somewhat of a moving target in that we have new users coming onto the system and the cost is fluctuating downward, but you know, that's all I know. I don't know if the, you know, firming the number that we can provide or not. I think you've been closer to this than I have been, so I hope you could shed some further light.
Yeah, I can absolutely do that. I did email Mary Beth and I went back and forth a little this afternoon, so I know she has the most recent information. So what has occurred, and I apologize if I'm repeating things that she said, but from the town's perspective, what has occurred is originally in 2017, there was a map plan and report prepared with a specific discreet number of users. And the user fees are based on the assessed value. Obviously, once you add on additional folks, that will reduce your user fees. As of today, those fees are different. They will be different. At this point, at least Hudson Headwaters has joined on. I know Dunkin' Donuts is learning, looking to, Stewart's is looking to, and those are just your commercial ones. There are other residentials that are looking to and that have told us we're going to connect and they've told us because we've been obtaining easements from them through this process. With respect to providing a specific, you know, end number for the applicant to make a determination, that really is kind of on the applicant, because at this point, we know that, you know, and I, as I put my email to them earlier today, if we include the entirety of the three different subdivisions that are being proposed, and I understand we're only talking about Arrowhead, but if we put the three different subdivisions plus just Hudson Headwaters, that doubles the amount, the assessed value that's going to be in the sewer system. And therefore, that halves the initial, the cost. So I mean, just, you know, a real simple elementary, if the cost was $2,000, the cost, if everybody gets in on these, is $1,000. The more you put on, the less it's going to cost, which is the beauty of the way the town did it with this. I understand that Travis has requested the town to give certain information. I don't know what other information the town can give. I know that Travis has also reached out and spoken with Don Rhodes from LaBerge, who is the project engineer on the sewer district. I know they spoke before the last meeting and I know that Don reached out last week. I don't think they connected. I could be wrong. I haven't heard from Don today to try and explain a little bit more and provide the information. But at, at this point, that's kind of where it has, where it is each day, a new user says, we want to be in, so please give us an easement. So it is a moving target, but it's moving downward. It's never moving upward. So I don't know, you know, what that does for the planning board or for the applicant tonight.
Yeah, you know, Carla, if I made the challenges, you know, I did speak with, with Don in January and he did reach out last week and his voicemail to me was essentially, I provided you the map plan and report from 2018, that should be all you need. Well, that's a 330-page document with four different financial, you know, potential scenarios with estimated construction costs. And, you know, I don't have my finger on this project in order to be able to understand the cost implication. And if, if the town is serious about soliciting additional connections, they need to be able to provide an idea of cost and I can't do that.
And, and I guess at this point, I will talk back to, back with the engineer, but I don't know as if the, I don't know how that would occur, you know, since I'm not the engineer at this point, or at any point, actually.
Yeah. I mean, on my end, I, I don't even know what the construction costs are for the project, so I, for the sewer project, so I can't possibly predict what these costs would be. And, you know, all I wanna see is that it's reasonably affordable. I mean, it, you know, and then we'll consider it, but the costs that I've seen so far are, are $2,500 to $3,000 a year for 30 years for an average home. And that is, I mean, half of that is not affordable. So, you know, it's, it's, on Route 9, where the properties clearly benefit from the sewer because they need it in order to develop it commercially, that makes sense. But for your average residential home with good soils for septic systems, you've gotta have a much lower cost in order for it to make sense. And so that's all I'm looking for. If somebody can show me, you know, that, that it's anywhere near reasonable, we'll consider it. But so far, I haven't seen anything to that end.
And, and the, the amount, the cost that you said, though, I've already indicated, is not not the actual cost. That was the cost in 2017, and it's already decreased. I don't know. I will talk to, I will let, this is the best I can do, you know, is, is I can speak with the supervisor, I can speak with the engineer to try and, and have them work with you with respect to this. You know, that's the best I can do. I understand that.
Yeah, and I understand, and we're, we're willing to work with them, you know. I'd like to hear it, and I'd like for it to work, but, you know, this project has been around for years, and, and what I don't want is for it to slow up this process. We've already been before the planning board on preliminary review for three months. We've had our outside agencies give us feedback, and we're, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we're ready for a public hearing, and we'll continue that sewer discussion, but not if it's going to slow up the process.
And I think to that extent, what, what makes most sense is for the project to proceed as it's currently proposed, and then to allow for the potential alternative of the connection to the sewer system in the event that the affordability can, can ultimately be determined. That would allow the project to proceed on track, you know, based on plans that have already been, as Travis said, under a significant amount of review.
And I can tell you that, you know, Travis, you were asking about the construction costs, that, that this is, the project is going out to bid next month. So, you know, we will have a, a much more accurate construction cost at that point. I know that's not, you know, I'm not telling you you have to wait. I'm not telling you anything. I'm just letting you know that's where the town board is headed, that they're going to go out for, it's going out to bid next month so that it can be awarded and construction can start piping the ground this year.
Well, it's good, and let's hope those costs come back lower than, than predicted, and, and that it's affordable, and we'll consider it.
Right, okay. I don't know what else, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's anything else I can add to this discussion.
Yeah, Carla, this is Ann Perdue. I've got a question, I've got a question for you. Thanks for coming on, by the way.
No problem. I kicked out of my other meeting. I said I got more important people to go see.
I appreciate that. Anyway, relative to seeker, we, we need to make a seeker determination before a public hearing. We still have a few agencies that have a few more days to get back to us with any comment or just not comment at all. And it's my understanding of seeker that whether or not these units are served by public as opposed to private sewer would affect whether or not we classify them as type one or type two or unlisted. I think that if they are off or on, on private septic systems, there is more likely this is a type one seeker project, per theory taking into account the other half of this development, and then possibly even the Jacoby development. So I'd appreciate your guidance on, on those issues.
Well, I can guide you as most as I, as best I can. It's my, my recollection that the, has the planning board already done a seeker initial determination as to the type and as the lead agency? Didn't you do that at the last meeting?
We initiated a coordinated review.
Right, but what did you decide it as? In order to start the coordinated review, you had to accept the type?
It's an unlisted action.
Unlisted, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that. I believe it's a type one action.
What threshold does it cross, Travis?
Maybe I'm incorrect. I thought you classified it as a type one. Do you recall, Mary Beth?
It was an unlisted action, and I believe that that's.
It was unlisted. All right, I apologize.
Maybe should be a type one, though, given the number of units and private septic, and then proximity to the park. I think all those things throw it into type one.
Well, it's really not a matter, this is Jim, having looked at these things before, it's either a type one or it's not, and then it's unlisted. I mean, it has to cross the threshold on the type one list in order to be considered a type one action. I don't, I don't know of any threshold this crosses even as a, a project under private septic systems.
Well, there's one that, that's a construction of new residential units in excess of 50 units that are not connected to sewerage system, public sewerage systems on habitation.
And this is not 50 units.
Do we have to consider the other half of the?
You have to consider them, Ann, but you can't include those in this. We, this, we did discuss this at the last meeting, that they are separate seeker, you have to, they have to be identified in the seeker papers, but they are separate seeker determinations.
And that is proximate to the park, doesn't require that we use a different threshold?
I don't know as if the proximity to the park kicks it into a type one. I don't, I don't have that right in front of me, Ann. It's something I can look at, but I don't have it right in front of me.
I can send, I send the type one list to everybody tomorrow.
Okay, but then again, Carla, in terms of how we proceed from this point, what would you recommend?
Does the board intend on setting a public hearing tonight?
Well, that's one of the things that Travis is requesting.
No, I understand that, but I don't know what the board's intent, like, is this what would hold up the setting of the public hearing? I mean, you can, you can set the public hearing for any date. You could set the public hearing for April, and then, and Mar, in March, you could do your seeker review, or you could set the public hearing for the, you know, we have a meeting March 8th, and then you have another meeting, you have a second meeting in March as well. So, so you, you know, you have a couple extra options. So if you wanted to set the, if the board desired, and they feel it's ripe at this time to send this to a public hearing, you just have to complete your seeker before you open your public hearing. You could do it that same night, or you could do it, you know, at the next meeting, however you want to do it.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
Travis?
Yes.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yeah, Mike.
Would you be interested in putting the infrastructure for the sewer in here for future use?
Yeah, I think I'd have to have a pretty, you know, that's, that's not a, it's not an unsubstantial construction cost, so we'd have to have a pretty good feeling that, that the sewer's realistic before we would commit to that.
Well, I kind of think it's, it's a, it's a way to go down the road, you know? Even, even though the soils are good, we're, we're still putting a lot of stuff into the ground, and it's 2020, I, I would, I would like to see, for one, move along with it, with the town for our cost, but I'd like to see why we're putting in everything else is to put the infrastructure in there and be ready for sewer for the future, because I, I kind of see it going that way myself. Municipal sewer is, is the thing of the future, so.
Yeah, you're fortunate in Moreau that you have about the best soils you can have for, for septic systems, which is why for residential development, you haven't, you haven't needed to consider sewers for standard, single-family residential. But, you know, again, if, if, if we can get a, a feeling that, that the sewer is going to be affordable, I'd like nothing more than to connect this to the sewer system.
Yeah, well, and I think a way the town can move forward by making it, as, as these subcommand, we put into sewer, and the more we get out, the cheaper it's going to be. So I, you run soils, and we can protect soils by, by going ahead and putting in municipal system of sewer, so. I think you're at that point now where I'd like to see that. I don't know how anything else will, but that's, that's something I see in the future. I mean, you know, 20 years ago, we didn't have a whole lot of water in here. Now everybody's coming in and putting in water, and I think now, now it's time for the sewer. I myself. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
This is Mary Beth Slevin. I would just add that if the project is in compliance with the applicable regulations from the state level and the town level, unless there is, the threshold of affordability can be addressed, there isn't a practical reason to require the project to attack, connect to the municipal sewer. There's certainly benefits to doing it, and Travis has already indicated that he would be willing to investigate that with assistance from the town, but the project, you know, as proposed, you know, is in fact in compliance with the applicable requirements from both state and local requirements and warrants being reviewed on that level.
As far as everything is concerned, we're obligated to review what has been presented before us. We've entered into discussion, and yes, we would like to see sewer, but we have authority to require such. I don't believe we do.
Right.
We'd like to talk to them and get it in there.
Right. I'm just thinking future use, and I totally understand where Travis is coming from.
Hey, Mike?
Yeah?
I guess, you know, I don't disagree with you, but if one of the existing neighborhoods, you know, off Myron Road decided to hook up to the sewer, they'd run the sewer line through the neighborhood, right?
We'd run the line through the neighborhood.
Well, I mean, if there was enough people willing to, to sign up for it, I don't know, maybe the town, whomever, at some point, if people want sewer, they'll pay for it.
Correct.
You know, so I, I guess I look at it, and I, my, my feeling, I agree, that I don't, I'm not aware of any, any law that, that requires a sewer here, and, you know, I think.
No, there's no law that requires.
I just agree that we should look at what's presented in front of us and judge it on its merits.
I could pop in, I just, you're absolutely correct. At this point, there's nothing requiring sewer, and the planning board does not have the right to condition anything on a, on, on connecting to sewer. The town board is looking to create a local law for future applications, for future subdivisions that they will be required to connect to sewer, but at that, at this point, the law is not yet adopted.
I have one. Travis, this is Jerry Bouchard. Can you tell me where the R1, R2 zone line runs through this development?
Sure. Yeah, so if it isn't on my plat, I'll put it there, but if you can see, is it the zoning map? You can see a blow up here. It just, it catches the south, southernmost corner of that, of that dog leg.
So is it?
R1, R1 is the orange, R2 is the yellowish-orange.
Right. So if I look at your sheet two of 15 of your overall subdivision plan?
Okay.
I'm looking like, is, is the lots like 25, 26, 27, 28, or those? Is it down in that area?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that looks about right, and I'll, I will show it on future, on future maps for you, so you know exactly where, well, to the best of our ability based on the zoning map, so you can see where it is. You know, it cuts through the middle of the parcel, but, yeah.
Okay, and then based on those, I guess I'm just looking at, I'm wondering, do those meet the minimum lot size?
Yeah, so this, this is a cluster, so density is established based on the, the overall, the overall, and then, which, if I jump, I've got a slide on that. You know, in, in R1, let's see, R1, there's 18 and a half acres, in R2, there's three and a half acres, so when you work out the math on those two, the total permissible density here is about 51 and a half, and we're proposing 44.
I dropped off for a minute, sorry.
What's your pleasure, Mark?
Peter, this is Ann. I just want to, I look back over a minutes from the last meeting, and I don't see that we made the seeker determination. We did just initiate the coordinated review, and we're waiting to hear back from the other agencies, who still have some time. And so I would think that the next time to consider a seeker determination, as Carla suggests, might be at our March 8th meeting, at which point we would have heard back from anybody who intended to, you know, to weigh in. And then if we're going to have a public hearing, it has to be after that?
Always entertain motion to declare the type of action that this is, and we're open to a better plan.
Ann, would you consider, Ann, would you consider scheduling that public hearing for the 15th with an undertaking of, of, you know, making sure all the coordinated review letters came back by the 8th, and that gives us plenty of time to notice it and advertise it and put up the signs for the 15th?
Is that our next, is that our next meeting after the 8th?
Yeah, I believe it would be, yeah.
The other question is, Jim, do you have any feel for how many projects we might have on our agenda on the March 15th already?
Oh, you know, I know these, these subdivisions are going to continue to, you know, work their way through review, so I expect, you know, any combination of, you know, Arrowhead, SRH, and the Jacoby Farms. I don't know, or there's another PUD working out there, but I don't know of any other site plan review per se, but there is another large PUD that's, that's, I think, coming our way.
I guess the reason I'm asking is I was wondering if you had any feel for whether we were going to have to schedule two meetings to split the, the March 15th one also, in which case, even if we waited till March 8th to do our determination, we could still have plenty of time to schedule a public hearing for that second meeting, if you thought there would be one?
Yeah, at, at this juncture, I would say, you know, we, we can stay with one meeting for March, but I'm not certain of that. And if we did, we did have to schedule, I, I would suggest to the, the board the 29th, which would be two weeks.
Okay.
Carla, I'd like to, to pop in and, and ask the board's reasoning for not declaring a type tonight and waiting to declare a type. What are you looking to, does the applicant have to provide you additional information? You do not have to wait to hear back from other agencies to determine type.
Very true.
I mean, generally, you determine type and declare lead agency at the same resolution, and then you do your 30-day review, your 30-day waiting period from the other agencies. I don't, I just don't, I think we're getting a little too complicated, and I don't know what the board is attempting to accomplish by this.
Well, I, I guess my prior point was, you, you can't, you can't declare something a type one action when it doesn't meet the, the criteria on the list. It's not the same as reaching a positive declaration on an unlisted action. It's not up to debate. Either it's a type one or it's not.
Right, and I don't see as this is, is a type one action, but I guess that's.
I didn't even get into it when they, when they initiated the coordinated review, because it's clearly an unlisted action. It doesn't qualify for the type one list.
So do we need a formal motion to declare that?
You do need to declare what type it is, yes. Like I said, that's usually done when you do lead agency.
Carla, the provision I was looking at said that if it was otherwise an unlisted action, but it exceeds 25% of any threshold under the type one section, and it's substantially contiguous to any publicly owned or operated parkland, that that makes it a type one?
What is this, the 25%?
It's 25% of any threshold, and so I'm looking at the 50 units, new residential units that are not connected to a public sewer.
But it, there's not 50 units, there's only 44 units.
You take 25% of that if it's adjoining parkland.
Is it substantially adjoining the parkland, or just adjoining?
Well, it's got that corner, and you guys have provided for an access easement possibility. That's why I ask, I, I, I'm not, I'm not a seeker expert, I've just taken a seminar or two. It's dangerous, maybe.
Yeah. No, I'm with you, I just, I thought you said, and this is Jerry, I thought you said that the wording was that it was substantially contiguous to?
I'm looking at it again, I'm just getting down to it. It's either.
Because this property actually is not contiguous, there's no common border with the park.
I didn't think there was.
Right?
Share is a corner.
Exactly one point.
It comes to a point.
One, one point.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking about substantially.
Yeah, it says substantially contiguous.
Yeah.
That's why I asked.
I don't think that this would, if what you're saying is true, and I don't, you know, we don't have the map on the shared screen here, then it's not substantially contiguous. If you say it's just basically a point that they come to, they don't share any borders, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay, I guess that's, that helps, that clarifies it for me, thank you.
I would agree with that.
So that would make it an unlisted action?
Right.
So then I'll make a motion that we declare this an unlisted action? For seeker?
This is Ann, I would second that.
Motion been made to declare the environmental system review for Airhead Meadows as to be an unlisted action. To that motion, do I have a second?
I second it, this is Ann.
Ann, thank you, thank you for telling me who's talking. Motion been made, seconded, any further discussion? And I also do not think this was due to controversy. All those, a favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
This is Jerry, can I, can I ask one more question? I, my feed cut out when I think Travis was answering me, I don't want to revisit it necessarily about the lot size stuff. What was the answer to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
It's okay, I, I cut out for a minute, and I lost it.
No, I'm sorry, so yeah, so this is set up as a cluster subdivision, so we take the base density and the R1 zone and the R2 zone, and when we work through the base density, we actually, it comes out to be just over 51 lots, and we're proposing 44, so we're, we're under that base density with the cluster.
Okay, thank you.
But on that point, when we get to a resolution, a final decision, it should be referenced that this is a clustered subdivision.
Correct.
Because that does affect, you know, any approvals going forward, like, for example, the last one that I'm aware of, right off the top of my head, was the Winterberry subdivision, and that has its own set of setbacks and lot sizes that are unique to that as we're able to cluster it. And the same will be true of this.
And board, what further would you like to do?
I'll make a motion that we have a public hearing for May 15th at 7:01 PM.
Aye?
May?
About March?
I say May? March?
Yeah, she said May. That drives for the beach, Jerry.
I'm going on vacation in a couple days.
Background was traveling the floor.
March 15th, at 7:01.
Okay, motion has been made to hold a public hearing for Airhead Meadows subdivision for March 15th, I assume this is 7:01. To the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that one, Pete. That's John.
Motion been made, seconded, any further discussion? This one also is not due to controversy. All those, a favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? Motion carries? Turn around, spare a plane, Mr. Mitchell, do you have any further questions of us?
Yeah, Jim or Pete, could you remind me, I believe, is it still the case in Monroe that we post signage on the property in advance of the, of the public hearing? Okay. And do we, excuse me?
Certainly is.
Yep, and do we, as the applicant, notify adjoining neighbors?
No, we do that, you post a sign.
Okay, understood, I appreciate it. 10 days prior, all right?
Yep, 10 days prior.
That's, that's all I have, thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Yep, Jim, I'm going to try and give this control back to you, all right?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me, is the screen share stopped?
Yeah, it stopped.
All right, and do you, let me try and leave the meeting and see if I have to give you control.
You know, take with us?
He has, he has those.
We have it back, Mr. Murphy?
I believe we do.
Okay, good. The next item I have in the chat of this evening is BKM Properties. Do we have one of those?
Yes, we do, we have a, let's see here. Yeah, somebody from CLA Site.
You were a lot more reasonable than I would have been.
And then Nick Myron, Nick, are you there? Nick?
Hi, Jim, this is Peter Loyola, CLA Site. Nick is on another line, and he's going to be sharing.
Yeah, I unmuted him. Are you there?
Yeah, I just got an unmute. Jim, Peter Loyola.
Yep. And I did unmute Nick as well.
I just spoke with him, he should be coming on, he should be on.
Okay. Nick, are you there? Nick? You're, you're still there, right?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Yeah, Nick must be having a problem with his voice, because I have him unmuted, so.
You have him unmuted, and all he has to do, well, I mean, I can, I can handle a presentation if we need to do that, hang on, let me just, how can? Video is not going to be on, right? I don't need to start my video?
Yeah, I know, Nick was, was inquiring now, sharing his screen, and I was trying to get him to do that. If I, I just promoted him to a panelist, so he should be able to. Nick, here? It's made him a co-host, so he should be able to share his screen if he's there.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I could just text him real quick, otherwise I can, I can share my screen on my side, and we can go through it. Apologize for the delay. Oh, there he is.
He must have trouble with his audio.
He could probably call in on his cell phone, then. Is that?
Yeah, you could try that.
Got his audio on?
You don't know how much I revel that, I'm 60 years old, and I'm managing this technology, and Nick is the millennial, and.
Yeah, you're doing good.
He can't get through.
He said, he's, he said he's in now, he texted me, he's in now, and you just need to unmute him.
I did unmute him. Let's see here. Yeah, he's unmuted. He must be muted at his end. Now he's trying to adjust his audio.
Any chance you can hear me now?
Yes.
Are you there, Nick? He was there for a minute.
Can you still hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. I had to hang up on the phone and plug in my headset here. Okay, sorry for the inconvenience there. All right.
You're nearly the latest in a long line.
Yeah. Well, we're here now, can you see my screen? It's just Google Maps at the moment.
Yes, we can see your screen.
Okay.
The gentleman in the room can, but they have their plans in front of them.
Okay, perfect. Well, my name is Nick Myron, Director of Engineering at CLA Site. I'm here with Peter Loyola, the Principal of CLA Site, and we're here on behalf of Brian McKenzie at BKM Properties LLC to request site plan approval for an 8,000-square-foot multi-tenant commercial building on Lot 1 of the Route 9 Professional Campus subdivision, an old Saratoga Road, that is between exit 17 and Morel Lake here. So the parcel is located right about here. Let me pull up my plans. So this is a copy of the 2016 subdivision and site plan that was previously approved by the Town of Morel Planning Board. So this was one parcel that was broken into three lots, proposed for a professional campus. We are proposing the development of this Lot 1 right here. So it's, it's not significantly different from the previously approved site plan. There is an access drive across Lots 1 and 2 to serve the common use for the three parcels. Lots 1 through 3 were all conveyed in one deed, and are accessed by this, the shared easement here. The parcel is located in the C1 Commercial District, and all of the improvements proposed are fully compliant with that. This is the existing conditions plan that shows the three lots, the overall subdivision here, Old Saratoga Road runs along the north, the Saratoga Road and Route 9 is to the southeast. And this is the proposed site plan. So what we're proposing is this 8,000-square-foot multi-tenant building, it's a steel-framed building with metal siding, and the intent at this point is to have the interior built out as tenants are brought onboard. So water will be from a drilled well on site here, wastewater treatment will be a septic tank and absorption trenches behind the building. The exact configuration of that will be determined once the percolation test can be confirmed in the spring. The proposed signage has not been designed yet, the intent is for that to be a common science, a sign for the three lots once subsequent development occurs. But once we get to that point, it will go through the sign process and the permit, and it'll be designed per the town standards. We also included a lighting plan. So what we're proposing is six pole-mounted, pole-mounted and four building-mounted LED fixtures, which will maintain a relatively low level of light, it's around two to four foot candles throughout the property. So there's a pole-mounted along the north and east, and then the four building-mounted will be above the overhead doors. This is a copy of the floor plan and the building elevation, so as you can see, there's two storefronts along the front of the building with pedestrian doors and overhead doors, and then overhead doors and pent doors along the north and east sides. So we're not currently showing a landscaping plan, the intent at this point is to maximize visibility from Old Saratoga Road, I know that was one of the comments that came through in the initial review, but we would definitely like to discuss that at this meeting and see where the board sits. The snow storage will occur, we identified three areas here, on the west side of the parking lot, next to the screening enclosures for the dumpsters. Stormwater will be treated with grass swales and two infiltration basins at the northwest and southwest corners, and then green space. And the site plan, the application that we provided included the seeker, so that was previously submitted and approved by the board, I believe, at the August 15th board meeting, it was unanimously approved with a negative declaration. So we did resubmit the short form, but the seeker has already been evaluated for this property.
So you are proposing a structure for one lot only?
Correct.
I think, I think we've seen this layout in store, they created the subdivision, so we have in one building, what is going to be the usage of that building?
So the, the usage of the building will vary, the interior build-out will depend on which tenants are identified. At this point in time, the intent is for half of the billing to be BKM's construction company, and potentially an auto detailer in the other half, as far as the other two lots and the three. And auto detailer?
The seeker for store, is substantially different than for this application. Store, we know that environmentally with the site, there are more concerns, we have to address is what is going in this building, is there a supply of that? So they are significantly different, they may be contiguous by the time we know at this juncture, which need to tell us, or enlighten us, we can say, as to what is going to occur if you're auto detailing, are you going to use corrosives, are you going to use discharge and oil? Then this is the thing we need to address.
Yeah, from my standpoint, I would recommend that the board go through seeker again.
Oh, definitely have to.
Yeah, because this is an unlisted action, and you have to take up the subsequent form. The subdivision doesn't, I mean, with that action, this is something different now.
That's totally different, yes. This is standard follow-up. What's going on in this building? Your storage construction terms, that's fine. Or are you using chemicals, solvents, who knows what else?
No, I mean, I think, this is Peter Loyola, CLA Site, I think it would be a good idea, I know Brian is on the, on the other line with us, but this company is.
Yeah, I just unmuted him. Hello, Brian?
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, sorry, I didn't see your hand up there, so, but you're unmuted now.
Okay, you can hear me, right?
Okay, you can hear me, right? Yeah, so the, the auto detailer is just something we're looking to propose. The, the, we also own a strip mall up there on thirteen thirty Route nine, where the detailer is located now in your town, up with the barber shop and all that. We're just looking, uh, he's looking to expand. Um, so you can fit more cars in there for dry time and stuff. So the business is already located in your town. Um, there's no chemicals or anything like that. Uh, we do run a drain system with the catch oils just for safety and stuff like that, but we're just looking maybe to move him. It's not anything signed. Just he's looking for a bigger shop. He's outgrowing a shop that we're, we're renting them currently.
Hey, this is Jerry Bouchard. Are you thinking that the building that you're putting in will be similar in, uh, appearance to the, to the one that you put in? So with the stone, stone type front and all that?
I do all those, yeah, stone along the front. We're actually going to probably run a little trim, different trims and stuff on this one. Um, but yes, the appearance will look dead, if not a little better, you know? Uh, we're looking to place three buildings. Hopefully by the time we're done on all three lots, it'll look like that. It's the, I, I understand when they say, you know, a metal building with the metal siding, but this is awful. Uh, we're dealing with Munter Enterprise also, uh, who will be building the building, who builds high-end buildings. Um, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna have that warehouse look, which I know you guys are staying away from. It will have the same appearance as my other building located on thirteen thirty.
Good. I've received a lot of positive feedback on the appearance of that building. So that's good news.
Thank you. No, so we're, same thing. We're looking to put all the eaves on it. Uh, we probably won't have a big steel front, but we'll have all the overhangs. Uh, we'll probably do some trim along the tops, stone along the front and, uh, along Old Saratoga side that's visible. Yes.
Yep.
And I guess that's the biggest thing with the landscape and me personally. I mean, uh, you guys see what I do. Uh, I take a lot of trees down. Um, I like everything clean, cut, green grass. So, you know, we'd like, we want to make a real nice entry into this place, you know, a nice sign. We want to share the signs with the other lots. So it's just, we're not having three, four signs up through the property and all that. Keep everything nice, clean and tight.
Are you going to have floor drains in this building?
We will have oil, uh, catch floor drains again, yes. Uh, same as our existing building we have now with all the oil catchers and everything like that. Yes.
Your tent is not to change oils and stuff like this.
Yeah, they just wash a vehicle every once in a while. That's all we're doing in there. There's no mechanical work happening there. Uh, the other half's gonna be actually my construction company, McKenzie Drywall. Uh, we do commercial steel framing. So the only thing I'm looking for is all my man lift toolboxes, game boxes, hand tools, stuff like that. That's all we're looking to store in there.
Questions for a second?
What, yeah, this is Jerry again. What do you envision for, um, for landscaping along, uh, Route nine, not Old US nine, but Route nine?
My land actually doesn't border against, uh, Route nine. This lot does not border against Route nine.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the, the side of it because that's all been cleared.
Yeah, so thi- this is Lot one.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so you are, you're behind that. Okay.
Correct. I'm existing. Yeah, there's, uh, there's a big sign out there, road sign there. Yeah, this is still a board.
It looks just, it's, it's stark how different it looks now that it's been cleared. So, yeah, I, I apologize for misreading that portion of it.
No, we're gonna get that. I mean, all the grasses will be put down. So it'll be green grass till something else is being built there. So it'll be all nice manicured there.
And I, I, I see your, I see your light plan and, and your, your, uh, you know, the way that you're showing the downpass light and all that. I would just, you know, just want to emphasize that with that residence right across the street, of course, let's, you know, be sensitive to the light heading towards them. You know, you gotta keep it on site, of course, but.
We keep it on site. We actually lowered the light poles for that reason. And then, I mean, depending on you guys, we could get rid of that one at the entry. We're thinking for safety, we have that one there. Um, so you know, it's the top of the hill and everything like that. Yeah. If it's, I mean, that's the only light that's coming close to her, we could remove it and put like a couple, uh, uh, decorative street, street lamps or something like that instead.
Yeah, and this, it does have some throw into the road. You'll see this blue line is that the point five foot candles and this is the zero foot candles. So that it's not throwing off the road or onto a parcel currently.
Yeah, I think that's important. I would, I, you know, I would hope that they would, if, if they're concerned, would have some comment, but that would be my, the biggest concern I see is just making sure that it's not suddenly, uh, you know, a big light show across the street from them. That's all.
No, and that's actually why we went with the light poles instead of everything against the building with the light poles that shines in instead of the building shining out. The ones on the building are just little lights above the garage doors, which are minimal compared to a light pole, but the light poles actually shine in.
Uh, this, this is Jim Martin. I, I put in my staff notes, I, I, I understand the point about the landscaping, man, but I, I really think one needs to be included as part of this application. Certainly, um, CLN, CLN site is, is capable of doing a landscaping plan for this. Another thing I, I would recommend is I, I also understand a point about the monument sign, but, um, that, that should be, you know, part of this package if it, and I, it's, it's reassuring to hear that all signage is gonna be in one location on one sign for this entire, for all three lots. But it would be nice to see now what that sign is gonna look like visually and architecturally.
Jim, what if, what if that sign winds up being on a lot, on, on lot, uh, I don't got the right numbers here, but two or three?
Yeah, very likely it's gonna be Lot two, I would expect.
Right. So how is that? I, I, I mean, that just seems weird because it's, you know, I guess we're looking at the entire project, but it's, their site is Lot one.
Well, there, there will be separate site plan approvals for lots two and three, and there is a permit.
That's correct.
Sign itself, right?
Agreed.
But, uh, Nick, is it the plan to have one monument sign for all three lots?
The, the plan at this point is to have one sign for the three lots, but we're also not exactly sure how this is going to develop. And we, it, it will have to be permitted however it goes. We willing to get a permit for the sign. So we won't be able to install any sign until it goes through the permit process. So I'm not sure if the site plan should be held up for that.
Well, I'm suggesting it be held up, but I, I am suggesting that if, if that is the plan, at some point you guys gotta make a decision whether you have one shared sign or not. If that is the case, then, you know, I, I think it's prudent to see what that's gonna look like, where it's gonna be placed. And if that is the case mechanically, um, that's gonna be something that's probably subject to, you know, some sort of easement or or right of sharing that, that sign, that location among the three lots.
Yeah, Jim, there, this is Peter Loyola. Um, we have that, we have that shared easement, that hundred foot shared easement. And in that area, that's the only, that's gonna be the only entrance into this development. So.
Right.
So it's either gonna be on the west side of, of that road or most likely the, uh, the east side. So actually located on Lot number two. And we have the, we have the shared access there for that reason, part of, part of that reason. Uh, so that's just gonna be the one entrance. So, um, it's just, it, it's right now on Lot number, it would be most likely housed on Lot number two. But again, I, I think as Nick pointed out, we, we talked about this a little bit and we thought, all right, well, for the site plan approval, right now, because we don't know what the other two lots, uh, lots are gonna be developed as, we could possibly show a temporary location for the sign or a, a proposed future sign. Um, and then, and then come back with a permit on this so that it would be, you know, we could maintain the, uh, the site plan approval process for this, show the, the future location or potential future location for the sign and, um, and then come back to you at a later date when we know what the other two lots are gonna do. And be, but we are. Monument sign.
Or Russians?
Yeah, this, this is Ann Purdue. Um, a question regarding traffic, um, and traffic management. This access road, I, I think if I'm looking at it correctly, is at like the crest of a, a hill on Old Saratoga Road. And I'm kind of curious as to what kind of assessment of the traffic impacts have been done here in terms of not only trip generation, but safety of the movement in and out of that access drive at the crest.
So the, the access driver was actually put at the crest for safety reasons, because that maximizes your safe side distance in either direction. If it was on this side, then you would be blocked from the hill when people were coming. So this, this is the location that was approved in the original site plan at the crest of the hill.
Okay, so what kind of traffic are you going to generate with auto detailing and with the, um, drywall business?
I mean, it'll be fairly limited traffic. It, it's not gonna be significant impact on Old Saratoga Road. I mean, that, we, we show a maximum of thirty parking stalls in the parking lot to accommodate use, but, I mean, Brian, for your company, how many trips a day would you anticipate?
That's, that's me personally going in maybe three, four times a day and I'll have one secretary there. That's it. And then for the detail shop, if he does move in, um, he's two to three employees and that's it with an average of two cars, three cars a day that he details. I'd say he's in an existing building now on thirteen thirty, which has four tenants and it's half the size of the building coming out on Route nine.
So the parking spaces are well in excess of the traffic you were gonna anticipate in that.
Yeah, the only reason I have that many is because of the size of the building. We need that many parking spaces per. It's mainly office, little small office space with storage.
Yeah, so you're using, um, I guess the office space formula of one space per three hundred feet? Or you use retail?
Yes, the, well, the, the initial calculation was one stop for three hundred square feet gross floor area for office building, which requires twenty seven stalls minimum for an eight square foot building. Uh, we're showing thirty eight stalls currently.
Right. So the detailing business qualifies as an office use as opposed to retail? Jim, do you have a view on that?
Uh, I, I do that as a retail business. But, um, we, we need to then get into the floor plan and see how much of it is, um, uh, the area of the, of that uses is for the, uh, you know, the, the floor area associated with his car stalls when he's doing the detailing. And then is there a office or, or retail component or a customer waiting area? You know, uh, as another part of the floor plan. So, um, we, we would calculate off of the, the customer waiting area or if there's a display area or office area, that would be the, the calculation relating to those uses. And then obviously the area that's in the, uh, car stall for the cars being detailed, that doesn't enter into the, um, the retail, uh, space calculation.
Okay, so the next thing we would need would be a floor plan in order to make that assessment.
Yeah, to, to really get a drill down on the, um, number of spaces required given the layout of the building and the, and the proposed use of it.
Well, we're well over on the spaces right now, determined on where we are. Uh, also keep in mind in five, six years, ten years, there might be also a different tenant going in there. So we kind of designed it per office space. That's why there's so many parking spots.
Retail would be a higher number.
Yeah, could you have a plan there, uh, Nick, of the building you said?
Uh, we do not have a floor plan. No, because the intent is to do the interior build outs as tenants are identified. So the, the type of usage that we're identifying in a construction company and auto detailer will have limited office space relative to the overall building. It's an eight thousand square foot building. I mean, the auto detailer may have a few hundred square feet of office and display area. And the rest will be car stalls and workspace. Similarly, the construction side, there will be an office out front, but the majority of the space will be storage and work area. So even if this is considered retail, we're still gonna have more than adequate parking stalls to accommodate any of the demands for a future build out.
The detail is going about three thousand feet if he takes it. It's, if he takes it.
I, I was just gonna say, I don't, I don't, I have in front of me the exact details as far as how many square feet of, of retail space per parking space, but well, the, the spaces you have right now calculate out to two hundred and ten square feet of building for each parking space. So in, in as much as it appears that you have plenty of other areas to put parking in, it would seem that that would much, pretty much cover the proposed use at the moment. Um, my question is, is if there are other uses, does that come back in front of us for review for parking? I mean, if the detailer doesn't work out and somebody else moves in or, or you move your construction company out and put three tenants in there, then three of them are retail, does that change our, our parking requirements and does that come back in front of us? So that may be a question for Jim.
Well, see, it, it, it depends on the nature of the use. Like there's several small strip centers in town where when the use changes, they do not come for site plan review. Where the old Rock Hill Bakery used to be.
Right.
Um, and that strip center there. And then most recently, Brian's, this was just before my time here. His building on Route nine was approved as a multi-use, um, retail location.
Right.
So, you know, if he, he, he acted as some form of general use here, whether it's, whether it's Dean's retail or office, you know, within our, within our structure. And if it's approved that way, then the uses can change in it. We don't have to see it every time. But if he approves, if, if he chooses just as like pure office and a retailer wants to come in there in some subsequent generation of use here, then that's gotta come in site plan.
That's what I.
Because it was approved as an office building. If it's approved as a, as a retail strip center or, you know, a small strip center, then, then yeah, the uses change in and out. We don't need to see it every time. It depends on what this initial approval, you know, uh, involves and, and what's covered in it.
Now, do we fall under the retail right now? Retail strip mall? Or where are we falling under?
Well, that's why I was trying to get the floor plan. I mean, I could appreciate Nick's trying to say, but at some point, you know, you guys have gotta commit, uh, you know, uh, you know, a space utilization and what's gonna go where. So we know that we can do a parking calculation here.
I understand that, but in the retail business, sometimes you gotta build it and they will come is, uh, kind of the way I, you know, my motive.
Well, that's fine. If you, if you, if you wanted to say all eight thousand square foot's retail, then we'll do the calculation for parking off of that. Um, if it's, if it's some lesser number, then that's fine too. I mean, I would imagine at a minimum, there's gonna be some square footage here in a mechanical room, you know, for, for heating and, and what have you. So, um, that wouldn't figure in the calculation for, for floor area to park it.
Okay.
But you gotta have some.
I mean, for the, they're going in there, we're averaging maybe a thousand feet was office retail, if that, with the bathrooms and everything like that.
So I guess, Jim, the question is, do they need to have an exact floor plan design or do they need, need to have specifics as far as what they expect the retail usage would be, storage usage, that kind of thing?
If, if, if I'm the owner of this building, for, to provide me the most maximum flexibility, I would try for all retail. Because of this office, office is obviously less and that can be accommodated. But if it's office and then trying to go to retail, then additional parking is gotta be found in order to accommodate that retail use. So the best thing to do here is to be as aggressive as you can, you know, with your floor planning for retail. So you have the ma- maximum amount of flexibility going forward.
Well, or, or Jim, if I may, if he does it for office, then he knows just at that point that if he decides to change some of it to retail, he may have to come back in front of us for review to try and find.
he may have to come back in front of us for review to try and find room for more parking and whatever adjustments have to be made for that change, right?
Exactly.
I guess I'm just trying to avoid having a bunch of parking spaces. We don't have to have a whole lot of impervious space that we don't need at the moment. To the same degree, I'd want to make sure that the plan allowed for um, flexibility uh, for the, for the owner's sake.
Yeah, I, I, I wasn't here for the initial review. I think it was just finishing when I started, this, his former building on Route nine. However, that were done, it worked out very well because, you know, the, the building is operated fine. I've never seen any, you know, parking problems there. I never received any complaints about parking there.
And that one was really tight. And that one was really tight, Jim. Now, that one was really tight. So.
Yeah, and.
This is, this is Ann. The other thing, go ahead.
If I could just add to that, yeah, when we were looking at the, the uses in the different, whether it was retail or professional office, uh, we saw that even with professional office, we had more spaces than we actually needed for professional office. Keeping in mind that we wanted to, you know, really kind of maximize the impervious that we could without going too crazy with uh, with an overbuild out of impervious. So we were trying to create a little bit of a balance here with the parking, going a little bit over the professional office. Uh, but again, we, we, we understand that uh, if this goes into a higher intensity use, that there would be, you know, possibly a site plan action, but I don't think we intend, tend uh, to overload this area with, with additional retail so that the parking is not going to be able to handle, uh, you know, the use. We went over a little bit on the professional office because we wanted to create a little bit more flexibility. But in talking with Brian, I mean, he's trying to mirror what he did before on Route nine and it's working out really well. So he's been able to gauge his tenants and, and their use, you know, to the site. And he, that was, you know, what was conveyed to us on what he was trying to do here.
I guess some of my, what we're looking to focus to do here, um, here, um, another one coming across the street is these nice buildings with the office space, retail slash storage. Um, people that need 3,000 to 4,000 feet, sell something, but also retail a little bit. Um, that's what we're looking to do with these buildings. So I'm not sure we're just all, and I know you're talking retail, you're talking office, but maybe someone that's also selling a product, whether it's someone who makes their own hummus, you know, online, um, looking for 4,000 square foot. So we give them a place to make the hummus and they also have a little retail room with an office. Does that help at all?
Yeah, see where that, that gets dicey for us is, okay, use that example, 4,000 square feet for somebody who makes hummus. Well, they've got extra square feet, feet to, to store their, their raw material. They've got X number of square feet to actually make the product and they got X number of square feet to retail the product. So how does that break down within that 4,000 square feet? Cause that's all going to, all three of those things are different levels of parking need.
Understandable there, Jim, but also when the, when the person comes to me, if I have to go in front of the board, that's when we go in front to get approvals again. That's kind of how I was brought up with my other strip mall. It's multi-use, but anybody that comes in there, you guys have to approve the use.
I mean, I, I'm fine with that as long as we all go into this with the same understanding and come out of it with the decision that everybody understands and can live with.
That's my recollection of, of the approval last time as well. That we, we went around about this a little bit in those meetings, talking about, you know, how were we going to accommodate this multi-use uh, building and, and yeah, and I, I do recall us having those discussions that any change in use would result in a, a revisit to a site plan.
Yeah, changing use would do a, a, you know, a review and also see if everybody accepts it and everything like that. And make sure we got enough parking and accommodations, stuff like that, whether there's change to the building or anything like that.
So this is Ann. Um, so to um, understand what, what's happening here, you still have to have some notion of what portion of the property is retail versus office. So you can calculate the parking. If it's all retail, 8,000 square feet, then we're talking about 80 parking spots. And we're also talking about a different uh, traffic picture. If you have a, an 8,000 square foot retail operation. So I think, I think it makes more sense at this point, if you have an, an idea of what you want to put in here, that that's what you propose.
Right now, we do. Right now, it's going to be a construction company with about uh, 24 by 24 office with a bathroom. And the rest is all storage.
Yeah. And again, I think.
Maybe in the future, that's what the detail is, I am for sure. It's a hundred percent for sure. Construction companies, my construction companies going in there.
Yeah. So that's going to take that half of the use out. And again, when we were talking about this and planning for this, I mean, the site can only hold so much. And obviously, you know, to go to blow this out for retail with 80 spaces, we, you know, we, there, there was no intent to do that. Uh, we have, you know, some stormwater ponds that we needed to do plus uh, you know, sanitary system. So um, you know, we were, we were trying to balance out the, you know, the, the proposed use with some flexibility for additional parking. And so I, I would venture to guess that there's no way that we would max this out for full re, this building for full retail uh, on this particular site. I mean, we, we just wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, and the, and the other way to look at it is with only 38 spaces approved, you can't do a full 8,000 square feet of retail.
That's right.
You just, you know, if that tenant asks, you just have to say, yeah, only if we go to site plan review again to see if we can find, you know, 42 more spaces.
Which is understandable there. That's what we're looking to do is bring a tenant in that fits the spot we're building. If it doesn't fit the spot, we move to the next lot and build them, you know, go for approvals for a building that'll fit that tenant.
Uh, this is Jerry again. I have a, a question for you. Um, the, I'm looking at your parking lot and, and you've got your uh, your water retention, you know, ponds, for lack of a better word. What are you going, are you putting in any sort of um, you know, stormwater drains or anything in the, in the parking lot? Or are you just going to pitch it so that everything runs to there? What are you, what are you doing?
Yeah, the, the entire site is designed to sheet flow to the perimeter swales, you know, grass swales discharge the ponds. So there, there's no underground pipe.
Okay. So you're preventing by the pitch of the uh, the impervious surface. You're, you're sending everything to the southwest and not having it run down that steeper part back towards the intersection of Old Nine and, and Route nine?
That's right. Yeah. So that, the uh, the access drive on Old Saratoga Road is roughly at the high point. So everything in this lot one drains to the west. So nothing goes east towards uh, Route nine.
Yeah, I understand that. I just didn't know if you'd be, you know, uh, leveling the area on the parking lot and it would be, you know, something that the water would sit on, but you're, you're addressing it.
What is the area of disturbance? West, Anne, an acre?
Uh, the, the area of disturbance is 1.3 acres.
I'm sorry, how many acres?
1.3.
1.3.
Yeah, I, I know where you're going with this.
Okay.
Um, entire site's been disturbed and substantially. I mean, all three, three lots. Um, and I spoke about this with Matt, um, but we've done a lot of uh, of stormwater control and Matt's been monitoring this and it's under, under control there. You know, you, you saw the, the silt fence has been up and the other treatment there, what is it, Nick, the um, the tubes on the ground?
Yeah, silt sock.
Yeah, silt sock. So that's all, that's all by uh, virtue of um, Matt's review of the plans that have been presented and he's been monitoring now the compliance. So um, I think should be done is the stormwater proposal for this site plan should be reviewed by Matt and making, making sure it's in compliance with the overall three lots and what's been done in the recent uh, few months there to get it back under control.
How reasonable?
Cause there's a lot of disturbances occurred there. Um, and Matt's been working with them to make sure that they get this under control they have. And now we want to make sure going forward, we don't regret, but we continue to, to work with that plan.
And the, the entire property, all three lots are currently covered under a SWIP and, and under the state general permit. So we, we applied for and received coverage from the state for the three lot subdivision for the clearing. And we have submitted a revised SWIP specifically for lot one that includes this proposed impervious and the ponds. So in addition to the revised SWIP for this lot, the, the existing SWIP for lots two and three will remain in effect until everything is built out. So we, we are.
And that's what Matt's been monitoring.
Yeah, this is Meredith. Um, Nick, I was thinking that you would want to add on the details on L 700, a concrete washout, because that should stay on this property. For the construction.
Yeah, absolutely. No problem.
Is this uh, is this building required to be 300 feet back from Route nine? And is it?
Uh, that is only for warehouse buildings.
I thought it was for everything in commercial on Route nine.
Uh, my, my reading of district regulations is there's a, a specific clause for warehouses. And if you're proposing a warehouse, you need a 300 foot offset from Route nine.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the, the zoning regulations here. So for warehouse for enclosed storage of goods and materials, there, it says, see note three. And note three says the structure must be a minimum of 300 feet from Route nine. So that, that note three is only for warehouses. It doesn't refer to any of the other permanent uses.
Okay, thank you.
Or any further questions?
None from me.
Nope, nothing.
Well, this, this is Ann. I, I think we do need some more detail on the use of the, the space. Whether it's between retail and office and whatever else is in that 8,000 square feet, at least initially. Subject to the understanding that if it, if that proportion of use changes, they need to come back if it's uh, affects parking or traffic.
Okay. So anything else as you would like to say added to this submission?
Oh, I think we'd like to see some sort of a landscaping plan.
And I, I think Pete, I would like to see where the proposed sign is for now.
Okay, we can do that. Just show a temp, uh, uh, future location for the sign.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you decide later how you, you know, you're going to develop the other lots differently and the sign's going to be somewhere else, then that can be revised on the site plan. But, but for now, I think I'd like to see where the sign is proposed for the moment. Um, for this particular site plan, and then any revisions can be done later when, when you do have better ideas of what's to come. And I would join Jerry in the fact, I'd like to see some site, or some type of a landscape plan. Um, just so we know, it certainly is, Mr. McKenzie's done a fantastic job on Route nine. It looks really nice. Just like to see it on paper. That's all.
Will do. No, I think uh, if we, if we come back with the, the additional information, we can schedule a public hearing. Or are you going to require a public hearing for, for this, even though the subdivision was previously approved?
Generally, yes.
Okay. And is that something, is that something that uh, you know, we can just work with Jim on as far as getting the notices out? I mean, we would like to be able to, you know, complete the, get you guys the, the additional information and then put this immediately on a, into a public hearing.
Gordon, if you'd like to request the applicant to move on for the public hearing. Do you feel that you have sufficient information in order to do so? Or do you wish to see the items enumerated to be added? Do we see those prior to the schedule? Wish you luck.
This, this is Ann. I would prefer to see the revised plan before scheduling a hearing.
Is that, is that in the form of a motion?
Well, it says a, it's for a discussion. I, if people have another view, I'd like to hear it.
Okay. What do you say, Gordon?
Don't we have to do that being on Route nine?
You don't have to put up with this policy of the board to do that. Yeah. I was expecting you to be scheduled first.
I, I guess, well, this is Jerry. Um, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see the, I, I think the applicant knows what we are looking for. Um, I know that we've, I think this is the third time we've gone through this particular site. Um, granted, this is the first time anything's being actually brought to us to construct, but we've, my recollection is the, the neighbors, there hasn't really been any, any public input.
This is the first time with us. That was Stuart, Stuart B before. This is the first time with BKM.
Understand that. I'm just saying in general in front of the board. So I, well, I, I would like to have enough time to see what is being proposed and um, I would entertain going to a public hearing as long as the applicant was also understanding that there may come out of that some conditions. You know, that we, that we need to, you know, put into the final site plan in order to uh, rectify anything that we see that's lacking.
That's always the case, right, Jerry?
Yep. I just thought I would make that clear.
And I was going to say the same thing, that the, the things that we've asked for at this point are things that can be added to the site plan for a public hearing. And to be honest, if we go to the public hearing and those things aren't on there, they're going to come up in the public hearing. I mean, like, well, I mean, that's the thing. So like, uh, an example is I asked to have a, a sighting location of the sign. Okay. If for some reason that isn't done by the time of the public hearing, it will be addressed at the public hearing. So I'm okay with moving towards a public hearing on March 15th. With the idea that that information would be submitted and, and prepared, but if not, we'll certainly deal with it at the public hearing.
So is it the opinion of the board to schedule a public hearing? Or to delay the scheduling until such a time as you receive revised layout drawings?
I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for March 15th. At, at 7:05 PM. For BK M commercials.
Can we leave March for Arrowhead and that?
Motion been made to schedule a public hearing for BK M on March 15th, 7:05 to the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion. Comment first, please. Uh, this is Ann. I, I think we still have, this is Ann. We still have to make a seeker determination before the public hearing. Can we do that without having a, a revised plan in front of us that shows the, the use? And you have to have a seeker determination before the public hearing.
And you have to have a seeker determination before the public hearing, not before scheduling the public hearing. But what I'm saying is you could have it the night of the public hearing.
But we'd have to do it before the public hearing was convened.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'm fine with that. We just have to remember to do it. We kind of launch forward sometimes.
Put it on the agenda.
I'll second that Peter.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion?
Are we going to be okay with that with Arrowhead Meadows? Do you think that'll be lengthy at all?
Doesn't matter. We can always be late, but we can never be early. We can schedule for 7:05 until eight o'clock.
All right. Thank you.
Abstention. Motion carries. Applicant, you have ideas to what you need to present prior to. Are there any questions to make that when you last did your contact list?
Thank you. Landscaping plan needs to be developed and shown. We need more details on the use and then show how that use relates to parking and then a proposed location for the site.
We will do that and thank you.
Over the three items.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I got to take back the, hold on here, I got some.
Mike, I can't believe you don't think we can get through Arrowhead in four minutes. Is that you Jerry? Yeah, that's the snide one.
Hey, Peter's always made it very clear. We can be early or we can be late. We can't be early. So.
You know, I just thought that Arrowhead Meadows was going to take some time, that's all.
The thing is, is if we schedule it for 7:05, if for some reason Arrowhead Meadows doesn't show up, we only have to wait till 7:05 to go to our next public hearing.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. That's a good way of thinking about it, too.
That's why we always do it that way.
That way we won't be late to milk the cows, right Jan?
I wouldn't know. I haven't milked cows in years.
Yes, we are.
Next item I have on the agenda for this evening is U.S. Light Energy. For proposed unit development. Do we have one of those?
Yes, we do. We have Chris Koenig and Michael Finger from CT Mail. On the line, are you there Chris?
Yeah, Jim, I'm here.
This is Mike Finger from U.S. Light Energy. Just wanted to confirm, can you hear me?
Sorry, I had you, yep. Mike Finger from U.S. Light Energy. So yes, we have both representatives here.
Hey, this is Meredith. Before they start, I need to disclose that I'm an employee of National Grid as a lead scientist. And because of our involvement with all renewables and particularly this project, if approved, I've been requested to recuse myself from any advisory role.
Okay, we still have Adam Siebel is on, so I think that'll be fine, Meredith. Thank you.
Yep, I'm here.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to actually request Jim, if Chris can have screen sharing capability, he'd like to pull up a.
Okay, let me, okay, it just takes me a while to get there, but I do always get there.
No problem, while you're pulling that. While you're pulling that up, I just wanted to.
Yeah, Chris, you should have it now. You should have screen sharing capability.
I've got it, Tim. Thanks. You see it?
Yep, it's, yep, I see it.
Okay. Mike, take it away.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Mike Finger. I'm the chief operating officer of U.S. Light Energy. I'm joined here tonight by Mark Richardson, our CEO, and Chris Koenig of CT Mail Associates, our engineering partner for this project. We're here tonight to present our planned unit development located on Reynolds Road in the town of Moreau. I'd like to give a general overview of the project before passing along to Chris to get into a little more of the detail. So we're proposing for our primary use two 5-megawatt community solar facilities. For those of you that are unfamiliar with community solar, it's a local solar facility that is shared by many community subscribers who essentially receive monetary credits on their electricity bills from the generation of the facility for their share of the power produced. Our project in particular on this site, we're proposing two 5-megawatt AC community solar facilities that are proposed to connect to National Grid's Butler Substation that's located just south of the town landfill. And we distribute that power or inject that power through the company's existing distribution system. To date, we've completed a detailed utility analysis which found both systems feasible for interconnection and have maintained those utility applications while we've seeked project approval from the town. So the solar portion of this project features approximately 35,000 solar modules in total, each at approximately 400 watts. That brings a total capacity of the site to approximately 10 megawatts AC, and that can generate up to 18,000 megawatt hours annually. So the total capacity of the site coupled with our proposed single axis tracking system allows us to generate more kilowatt hours per kilowatt than the typical fixed mounted array. This ground mounted system would be a single axis tracker. So for those of you that are unfamiliar with that, it allows us to track the sun east to west throughout the day to maximize production on site. To put all of that into perspective, it generates enough power at this facility to supply nearly 1,500 homes with the annual electricity usage. And the community solar aspect of this project allows that energy to serve a wide range of community members who wish to participate in solar. However, it also allows people to participate in solar that may not be able to, whether it's the orientation of their home, limitations from their HOA, lack of available space, or even lack of ownership. This model allows you to participate in solar. If you have an electric account, the chances are you will be eligible to participate in this project. On this site, we're excited to take community solar to the next level by providing significant portion of the site totaling about 100 acres to the town of Moreau for future use. We've tried not to get too specific with the proposed use because ultimately it would be up to the town for their consideration. But we would anticipate and hope that it is in line with its historical use for recreation. Previously, this was a golf course. That's further recognized in the town's comprehensive plan, which also highlights the need to develop a PUD for this location. We feel this is a great use for the next generation. I'd also like to point out that aside from the vast amount of open space preserved by the natural challenges here, that being the topography and existing environmental features on the site, solar itself may be viewed as non-permanent. We intend to supply a decommissioning plan with our project, which would require all equipment to be removed from the site following the end of its useful life, which makes this one of the few development activities that can occur without permanently altering the landscape. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Chris Koenig of CT Mail to get into our site plans and happy to address any questions that come up along the way. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Before I move on, any immediate questions from the board based on Mike's remarks?
With the second. The secondary use to be through recreational use of the land being donated to the town.
Okay, so I'm just going to give the board a brief overview of where we are now in terms of the process. So with our submission, there's kind of three different things that we're looking for from the town of Moreau, from the town board as well as the planning board. First is the approval of the PUD zoning change by the town board. The second would be the site plan approval. And the third would be the subdivision or lot line adjustment of the property. So I want to switch my screen over here to the existing parcel map of this area. Our site is highlighted in blue and it consists of three different tax parcels. It's a little unusual because the tax parcels are bisected by a separate parcel that's owned by National Grid. So it's labeled here and I'll zoom in a little bit for those of you that are following along on the screen. As parcel number 10. So parcel number 10, this is the National Grid parcel. And this parcel is bisected, and then these two parcels are bisected by that one. And then this tiny three acre parcel over here is sort of, sort of an appendage as well. That's included in the entire site acreage, which totals approximately 203 acres. So I think, I think that actually gives a sort of a justification for doing this project as a PUD because there is this National Grid parcel that bisects the land. And there are also easements that are owned by National Grid, once this loads up, you'll see it, that carry through the land that could complicate other types of development. So I think the PUD will also do a good job at preserving large tracts of land and large acreages for potential future use when the solar array is gone. As Mike mentioned, this isn't a permanent land use. These solar farms have a lifespan which could potentially be extended, but essentially it's not a permanent development. It's a use of land on what's now an abandoned golf course that's fallow into something that's productive. As well as the donation of the 100 acres or 50% of the site for use by the town. And, you know, whether it's recreation, whether it's another use that they feel is necessary in the next decade or so, that the next generation of town residents and town officials and leaders come out to see value in something in this property that they acquire. We don't really know that yet. So we wanted to leave that open and, you know, kind of let the town decide what would be best suited here. Maybe it starts as recreation and maybe it transitions into something different as the time goes on. But I think that kind of gives credence to this as a multi-use proposal, including the solar arrays, which we've established as a temporary land use, as well as the town parcel which could host a multitude of uses. I think recreation is a forerunner as something that's, that would be feasible here and probably in demand at this time, given the state of our society and our needs and values. But we wanted to leave that open for the town to decide kind of at their will. So other interesting features through the town parcel, while we're talking about that would be some steep slopes, some interesting topography and geography. There's a class CT stream that extends through the town parcel, which would be essentially protected by this being deeded to the town and having no development around that area. As well as the steep slopes being protected. And then there's also in this area of the site, so in the southwest area of the site, there is a couple constructed ponds that are remnants of the former T-Bird South Golf Course. There's some freshwater wetlands and there are some open spaces that would be suitable for parkland or something. It's generally, you know, it's hilly, but it's relatively flat and usable, this portion of this site. And just to address the fact that we have changed this proposal, so when we submitted initially in December, unit B, as shown here in yellow, was occupied this portion of the property as well, and it was a little more spread out. But in the two months that had transpired between then and now, we were able to find a better solution and make the the layout of the solar array more efficient from an access perspective and from just a general layout of the panels. So we were able to consolidate unit B up into this northwest corner of the site, thereby leaving more contiguous open space for the town parcel. That kind of just made more sense to us and it just feels better to kind of have more separation between these two, between unit A and unit B. And to have some activity in there. And I think, you know, we discussed recreation and I think that's really a compatible use with solar, with the solar farm, right? You know, solar farms are, it's a passive use. There's no light emitted from them. There's no noise emitted from them. And it's really just a dark, quiet neighbor. And I think that's compatible with, with one, the recreational aspects that could occur on the town property. You know, people walking or skiing or walking their dogs in close proximity to the fence line. As well as, you know, the general neighborhood, you know, I think it's, it's less intrusive than other types of development that would be here or that could be here in the existing R3 districts. So that's sort of the overall look at the site and the concept. You know, we think it's a, it's a great use for the fallow abandoned golf course. That's been there for 10 years, sitting vacant. I believe they stopped operations in 2011 at T-Bird. So, you know, that's kind of the overview concept. And right now I'm going to jump into just a few details of the site plan. I know this, this particular meeting is for the PUD sketch plan. And what we're hoping to get from the meeting tonight is a positive referral to the town board from the planning board. So, you know, I know we're not really digging so deeply into the specifics of the site plan, although we do have relatively high level engineering drawings prepared. So I'm happy to get as deep as you would like, but I'll hit the high points right now about the actual site plan. So I'm going to jump off this map here into, well, actually I'll kind of start with acreages. So right now we're proposing unit A to be on its own parcel. So we've called that parcel A, and that's outlined by the bold black line here. And it occupies the southeast corner of the site. And parcel A is proposed at just about 41 acres with a solar array envelope of unit A. And the envelope is defined as really just the area of the panels and the row spacing. So it's not the fence line, but it's within the offset of the fence line. Okay, so the parcel, the unit A envelope is approximately 32 acres within this parcel. Parcel B is up in the northwest corner of the property. And again, it's designated by this bold line here. Parcel B is proposed at approximately 60 acres. And the solar array envelope of unit B within parcel B is about 36 acres. So that's parcel B. And then parcel C is what we call the town parcel. So that's, that's the land to be donated to the town as a part of this mixed PUD plan. And that is approximately 102 acres and is approximately 50% of the entire parcel acreage. And that's the blue hatched area here that you see. So all this land between or across the National Grid parcel is the town parcel. Access to parcel A and unit A will be from the existing driveway. So there's a barn and a clubhouse there currently and a paved driveway. It's kind of broken asphalt, but it's paved. And that's going to be proposed to be shared access for parcel C, the town parcel, and parcel A for the solar purposes. And really the use of. The town parcel and parcel A for, for the solar purposes. And, and really the, the use of that roadway, which is outlined here in, in gray. The use of that road, roadway is for A, construction and B, operations and maintenance. So, you know, a technician and pickup truck coming every so often to make sure the system's operating correctly, or if anything needs to be fixed. So very, very limited use of that road outside of the construction time during operation by, by the applicant, by the prop, by the, by the property owner. So we're proposing shared access. Um, and we, we kind of envisioned that the access for the town parcel. It's, it does sort of slope up here from the roadway. Maybe establishing, i- if it is in fact recreation to start, maybe establishing some type of trail or pathway here up on the top of the embankment. Fronting Reynolds Road and then kind of up into the town parcel. And then from there, you know, the, the choice is yours. But that was, that's the concept for access to unit A. So that's existing. And then access to unit B is going to be proposed out off of Reservoir Road through an existing National Grid easement, which extends through the lands of Irwin. So that would be, I believe it's a 25 foot easement into the site from an exist, on top of an existing National Grid easement. Um, and the National Grid maintains this easement, which is the orange line here. And, and there's a improved surface gravel road down through there, which stops here because there's a ravine and, and there's no connection really between from, from end to end on the site because of the topography. So, um, that's, that's access to, uh, proposed access anyway to, to unit B and parcel B. So so I think, I think access to all the parcels is established in this, in this plan. Um, there is a southern access here, which is existing. And what that is for, I believe National Grid maintains that access for their purposes because this National Grid parcel has transmission lines through it. Just, it's the, the tall power poles, I guess you could say. Um, so, so that's going to remain, there's no improvements proposed. The only improvement that's proposed is this 25 foot access road, which is required by National Grid to main, to access the power poles that are proposed to go in this location. So that's, that's kind of the overall look at the site plan. Um, I'm going to jump into our, our drawing set real quick. And this, this image here, it's, it's the first page, our cover page of our drawing set. And this gives a better look at where the panels actually would go and how they're oriented. So the sketch plan I just had showed a big yellow area, right? So that's, that's kind of the concept plan, the districting map. That kind of lays out land use, right? But this is more representative of what it would actually look like. So you have the fence line. And, um, you know, as you can see, the whole yellow area on the, the sketch plan is not actually all occupied by solar panels. It's occupied by the roadway, it's occupied by the row spacing and then the setback out of the fence line. And, and concrete pads and things like that. So this kind of gives a good overview of the project, the solar project on top of an aerial. And this, this sort of gives, leads more into discussions about the site plan, which, which are integrated with the PUD, you know, it's, it's one project, but this kind of gets more into the details of, of the site plan review piece of this, as I'd mentioned in my introduction. Um, and, and those details that the board will need to, to look at. So this is kind of the overview. And then we actually included a, um, an existing condition survey as the first several sheets of our site plan. Which shows topography and easements and, and meets and bounds. Adjointing property owners, acreages, things like that. So all that you could ever want in a, in an existing condition survey is on, within our drawing set here. And then this, this sheet, and I like to kind of point out reference points to the board members because there's a lot of information here. There's a lot of metrics. But I think this sheet's important for the site plan components because this sheet contains our metrics tables. So this is sheet C106 of your drawing set. And this contains different metrics that we believe would help guide the board in making their decisions and, and kind of looking at the size of, of the project. So this has array areas, it has, uh, the temporary wetland impacts that are, that are proposed. Clearing area, disturbance area. So kind of all the information that you, you'd want to refer to in, in, in your capacity as a board member, um, kind of is, is right in this, this part of the drawing set. So I'm not going to go through everything right now. I think that might take a little too much time, but I did want to point out that this was a, a good reference for the board members. So jumping now a little further into the site plan. So this drawing here will show our, our proposed access into the site. So as you can see, it's a, we're essentially maintaining the existing access. And since this would be a change of use of the property, we would need a New York State DOT highway work permit for the change of use. But really the beginning of our work begins here. Where, with the construction of the 12 foot gravel access road into the solar array. And there's a gated access here to prevent anyone from driving through or any wandering user of the town parcel. So it'll be clear as to, you know, the boundaries of the project. Uh, there's no, there's no shared entry with the public beyond just, um, just this parking lot. And, and this barn is, is actually would be for use by the town as well, for storage of things. And there's two concrete equipment pads proposed in array A. And the concrete equipment pads just really hold electrical equipment, transformers and inverters. There's no buildings proposed here. It's just a concrete pad. I think the, the drawing set gives adequate detail of, of how the panels will look and you know, what they're being built over, you know, kind of the existing topography and exists, the existing land use. And things like that. So this gives a good picture of unit B, kind of the northern end of the site. And I, I'm kind of focusing on this because this is, there's some adjoining residential properties up here that we recognize and, and provided an approximately 300 foot setback from the property boundary. And there is an existing tree line, as you can see on the survey here, and that clouded line right there. So you know, we recognize the proximity to those neighbors and setback the project appropriately from there. And you can see there are some areas of construction over these, these wetlands. These wetlands are not New York State DEC wetlands. They are under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers. So we would be receiving coverage under the nationwide permit for temporary disturbance in the wetland areas. Although the, it should be noted that the wetlands can still function as wetlands if solar panels are installed on top of them. So it doesn't, it doesn't fill the wetlands. It doesn't prevent them from being wetlands. It's, it's just, uh, it's kind of a, a multi land cover situation in these areas.
Chris, I just wanted to add as well that, that also is, uh, the ability of, of citing a solar array in this project allows us to take advantage of that area that is otherwise undevelopable as that wetland. Uh, the, the nature of these systems are, are installed using a driven pile or ground screw. In this particular application, we are looking at a ground screw. So the actual footprint of what's in the ground is very small as compared to the surface area of what's above. So I just wanted to point that out. Uh, not only is it low impact in terms of operation, but in terms of installation, it's also relatively low, low impact.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mike. Thanks. Thanks for clarifying that. And you know, I think it's also important to, oh, sorry. So this is the other entrance that's existing. So we're proposing power poles above ground here. But the other lines within the site will be underground. So the point of interconnect is actually across the state highway at this existing pole here. So there's, uh, I believe seven poles proposed here, which would be accessed by National Grid through this, uh, proposed driveway here. And then there will be a, we're proposing a 30 foot wide underground utility easement through the town parcel to run the, the power line from the array to the point of interconnect. And, uh, the same thing for part of unit A, we're proposing, I forgot to mention that we're proposing power poles here as well. And that's a requirement from the utility to have access to these power poles. And all, all other lines within the array are, are underground. This last piece here, I just want to kind of review, this is the, the steep slopes map. This shows slopes greater than 10%. And this is, this is a, a requirement of the, the town code to show this type of environmental constraint. Although, you know, 10% is still developable, but this shows, you know, that constraint at 10% is required by the town codes. You can see there's, um, within the town parcel, there's, um, this hillie section with the, the stream at the bottom. And then there's some other areas of a little bit of hill here and here on, on unit A. But you can kind of see, this kind of gives a good picture of the topography overall on the site. So with that, you know, I, I don't want to dig too deep into the details of the site plan yet. You know, I, I want to kind of gauge the board's, uh, questions for the, the PUD first. Um, and kind of go from there, but you know, happy to answer questions. And I'm sure Mike and Mark, they're on the line as well as, as the project owners and, and they also own the property as well. Um, so there's no lease, you know, that they are property owners here. So that, I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions.
So from my simple understanding, as I'm simple, is the object of your application is to use the solar to generate electricity to go to the National Grid? So you're creating a commodity, am I correct?
That's correct. I do want to clarify that, that it's, it's being uh, distributed through National Grid's network, but it's participating in New York State's community solar program.
Well, I told you I'm simple, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. So you're, you're accurate. You got it right.
This is zone R3?
Yes.
And goes for residential, one to family. And with what you're proposing, can you tell me how this fits with the, when you develop regulations of the town?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think, I think it, it provides, um, you know, I have them, I have them up right here. This is the different objectives that the town can, can show, or the town has provided in, in the regulation. You know, I think, I think it touches on all of these in, in its, in its proposal. So the maximum choice of types of environment occupancy tenure. In this case, it reference how, references housing sizes or community facilities. Or available to the existing potential town residents at all economic levels. So I think we hit that with the exception of the housing, because there's no housing proposed, but community facilities available to existing potential town residents at all economic levels. I think providing free accessible open space to the town is, is, is a huge need. You know, everywhere I go around the region, you know, I, I live in the town of, of Wilton. And the trailheads are packed, you know, there, there's always, there's always a need for more outdoor recreation. You know, I have, I have two children. And we're always getting outside. And I, I feel like with the COVID-19 pandemic, people's values have shifted a little bit more towards being outside and enjoying solace in nature and, and having space, a little bit more space to roam around. And I think by donating 100 acres to the town, that, that could certainly be facilitated. It, it doesn't have to be the only use forever and ever, but it gives the town, you know, creative chance to, to, to look at this site and, and see what the next generation needs. It was enjoyed by at least one generation of, of golfers when it opened in 1992 and it's, it's brother course T-Bird North opened in the 1960s. So you know, there's, there's a history of recreation at, at this, at this site. And I think by continuing that, um, we kind of open up those facilities to the public. Uh, and that, that also applies to number two right here, open, more open usable, usable and open space recreation areas. If that's something that town feels as a priority, it's, it's certainly something that would be a great compatible use with, with, uh, passively operated solar array. More convenience and location of industrial, commercial and service areas. You know, I think this could probably be that the solar array has a, a favorable connection to the grid. And, and I think it's, it's, it makes it feasible economically. That it's, that it's convenient in location for that industrial use and the generation of another reliable source of, of clean energy. And, you know, as, as we transition in this state away from fossil fuels, you know, we're going to have, have more of these. Especially with the new goals set by the, uh, the climate leadership in Community Protection Act. Which, which set goals, aggressive goals of decarbonizing the economy. So the preservation of trees, outstanding natural topographic and geologic features and the prevention of soil erosion. Now, I think when I showed you the steep slopes map, you can, you can see how, how this plan will preserve those, I would say, you know, I, I'm not sure if they're designated as outstanding, but they're certainly unique. The ravines and the protected class stream that run through the site. And, and you know, the fact that we're, we're not proposing any development in, in those areas will essentially prevent the erosion of soil. And, and preserving these features. As, as well as, as, as we said before, the solar array is temporary. And it will preserve the actual soil on the site itself for future use. That, you know, we're not stripping topsoil, we're not excavating, mining out soil. It's just driving solar panels into the, the surface of the ground with very little other disturbance.
And Chris, another item, another point on item three as well as I think the, the solar use portion of the project pairs nicely with the transmission use that's already being used on the property for that transmission corridor and the adjacent access roads.
Very true. Uh, no, no, go ahead.
Address our mixed use requirement from the PUD.
Uh, I, I think it addresses that adequately. It, you know, there's the solar development and then there's the, the, the town piece of it. And, and we know that the town may do recreation there. So that's, that's a use. They may do other uses as well. So there's a variety of uses that, that the town can do, but it would be up to the town to, you know, kind of to, to fulfill that, that piece. But certainly there's, there's, there's more than, there's certainly there's, I would, I would say there was more than, than one use on, on the site.
Dedicated this to the town as part of your remainder? Or like?
I, I think it's, I think it's a bit, it's a big piece of it. I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't remove the town parcel from the project just because it's being donated to the town because it's, you know, they're going to be neighbors and they're going to be intertwined in their, um, their proximity and, and sort of the compatibility. So you know, there are certain uses that are more compatible with the solar rays than there are others. So I, I, I see it as one project. I, I don't see it as, okay, here's a town parcel. That's gone. Now we're just looking at the solar piece. I, I think it's, it's all one big project. On, on this 200 acre parcel or 200 acre site, I should say. It's more than one parcel.
Yeah, this is, this is Jerry. I, I have a question for you, Chris. I, I'm wondering, is it the intent of, of US light energy to simply turn over the property? Or is there the intent to, um, help? You know, build some, some recreational facilities within that property?
Mike, do you want to address that question?
Absolutely. So I think the, the intent of our application is to turn over that property to the town. I think that's a significant donation to the town in terms of, of usable area, uh, as far as working with the town to provide access or other agreements that they may need to. or other agreements that they may need to develop whatever they choose to use on the property, we would participate in, welcomely.
Okay, and I also personally, I would, I would be very, I would like to see the ability for access to the town portion from Reservoir Road. Because, you know, I know you have an easement that you're talking about using to get your, your solar area built. But Route 197 is not a very, I would say bicycle friendly road for kids. Nor is Fort Edward Road. Reservoir Road is not the most wonderful thing to ride a bike on, but it's a lot safer than the others. And its proximity towards the town park, you know, you're starting to get over to the ability of maybe attaching or connecting recreational facilities. So I would be interested to see what creative ways US Electric might be able to, or Light Energy, sorry, might be able to come up with to, to allow access to that, you know, proposed town portion from Reservoir Road.
Sure. I mean, we're happy to consider that. I'm, I cannot commit to anything tonight on that for the fact that we're dealing, yeah, for the fact that we're dealing with a third party either way. Adjacent landowner or whether it be the, the owner of that property or National Grid for that existing easement. Because of the third party involvement, I can't commit to that, but I can definitely commit to looking into it. It's something that seems to make sense, and if we can make it happen, we would.
And we thought, we thought the benefit of, I, I know, you know, Reynolds Road is, is a, is a 55 mile an hour highway here. But we have this already developed parking lot in the barn here, you know, so the town could use the barn for something as well. And that was sort of the idea behind sharing the access down here. It's while it's already existing, you know, what's, what's the least amount of impact we can have on this property in developing this? So we said, well, might as well use what we have, we have the barn and the parking lot. So that, that was kind of the intent for that. And just having it, it's already been a recreational facility in the past.
Absolutely. I think if you look at the way our town's developing and you look down Reservoir Road, you know, the, the applicant that was in earlier tonight, Arrowhead Meadows, there's a lot of housing that's going in to the north of this site. So I'm interested in, you know, when I was a kid growing up in this town, I rode my bike all over it. And, you know, it's become more difficult to do with traffic. So just throwing it out there, you know, you're looking to put a PUD in and I'm saying I'd like to see access if it got approved.
Great point.
That's a great comment. Yeah, yeah, thanks.
We'll bring that back to the team and see how we can incorporate that.
This is, this is John Arnold here. If, if I may, this is John Arnold. I've, I have a question about, you said you had, you're, you're planning to use the access from Reservoir Road to access unit B?
That's correct.
Okay. What is that access? What's the, the nature of that access at the moment? Is that a deeded access to National Grid or is it a purchased one? Does National Grid just have a right of way? What is the status of that?
So we understand that to be an easement or a right of way through the property granted by the landowner. We've been in discussions with that landowner and would seek to go on top of that with an additional easement or adjacent to that through that property.
Okay, all right. So you wouldn't necessarily have to have permission from National Grid to access that unit?
Not necessarily. There's alternatives available to us, should that not be an option.
Okay, second question, what is the expected length of useful life for these panels?
At a minimum, yep, so at a minimum, it'll be 25 years. Typically, these generate electricity with a useful life of anywhere from 25 to 40 years. That 40 year mark is generally the cap of our decommissioning plan. But does that, to answer your question, minimum of 25 years up to 40 years.
So but if at 40 years, you could choose to replace the current panels with updated ones or something that affect and continue on the use?
If it made economic sense to do so, that is an option. We'd have to consider the market conditions at the time and the viability of whatever interconnection equipment remains on site.
Okay. I guess I have a couple more, but I'll let them wait for now.
Is council on, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, Carla, are you there?
I'm here.
I'm hung up, okay, and I'll admit it. Comment on the mixed use for the accident call wise for that?
Sure. So the statute or the code requires, well, doesn't require, the intent of a PUD is to really look at mixed use, a lot of it being the residential portion of it. And I don't know, Chris, if you can put up the PUD, there you go.
Do you want that up?
Yeah, the P, the PUD, that would be great.
Yep.
Um, and if you scroll up, nope, yep, okay. So if you're looking at section one, and I know the folks that are at Town Hall aren't looking at the PUD. I don't know if they have the law right in front of them. But it does specifically encourage innovation in residential development. If you look at that in number one, it does talk about, you know, it's really for flexible land use, design regulations, you know, different mixed uses. And what the applicant is indicating is that their mixed use is their use plus the town's use. I'm not entirely sure that that's what the intent of the PUD is. Generally speaking, it is the mixed use of the owner of the property. And the owner of the property here is not the town. I know they, they intend to donate to the town. I think it sounds almost like a, and it a partnership that's being proposed with the town. I'm not sure what the town intends to do with it or if the town intends to partner with them. So I guess that's kind of where I'm, you know, to use your terms, a little hung up as to whether or not it meets the, you know, requirements of multiple uses. But that being said, at this point, the planning board's decision is to just review what's in front of them. And, and I don't remember if it was Michael, if it was Chris who said this earlier, that they wanted a favorable recommendation to the town board tonight. That, you know, unfortunately, that's not something that the planning board has the authority to do tonight. The planning board has to go through a public hearing process first. And then the planning board has 60 days to submit a favorable or unfavorable recommendation. So I can appreciate that they want to move this along as many applicants do. But that's not something that the planning board can do tonight. I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. So I think it's, I think it's, oh, let's see, let's try one F. C1 maybe?
Yeah, as my, as my understanding that the town board holds a public hearing on the.
Nope, there's two public hearings. There's a public hearing by the planning board before the favorable recommendation. And then there's a public hearing by the town board.
Oh, okay.
So, so, so that's, I mean, that's something, you know, chairman, that I wanted everyone to be aware of as well. And it's something, if there was going to be a recommendation, it would have to be, you know, drafted and determined and written up and sent over.
So Carla?
Yes.
If, if I may ask for your opinion on this, what, what are we reviewing as a planning board? Are we supposed to be reviewing the engineering side of it? Whether, or are we supposed to be reviewing whether it fits with the PUD part of the code?
That's exactly what you're doing. You're reviewing at this point, you're not doing like a site plan development, a site plan yet. You'll be doing that, you know, once the PUD, this is the creation of the zone. So what you're doing is you're looking at the PUD, you're looking to see whether what is in front of you meets the requirements for a, a favorable recommendation to the town board. Remember, this is just a recommendation, so it goes to the town board. And the town board then determines whether or not to move forward with it, whether to accept your recommendation or not accept your recommendation. But at this point, you're just looking to see whether it meets the intent and the substantive procedural requirements in the PUD portion. Not whether there's enough parking spaces, not in this one, there isn't any, but not, you know, things like that.
So not the engineering side and not the particular use, but whether it fits the requirements for a PUD?
Well, you would look at the use because that's one of the requirements for the PUD. I mean, if PUDs are allowed in this zone and there are certain PUDs that are allowed. And I believe as Jim put in his staff notes, that this would be under a public utility use, which is permitted as a PUD.
Carla, this is Ann. Would we also be considering consistency with the comprehensive plan?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You always want to look at your comprehensive plan.
And this is Mike from US Light Energy. I think it's also worth mentioning that the comprehensive plan specifically calls out this parcel for a PUD, although it doesn't really lend to its use.
This is Jim. I, I also want to chime in on this answer that was the, for the question posed. I, I am, I have grave concerns that this application meets the fundamental requirement of the PUD. I, I, I kind of see where Peter was going with his questioning. And there is supposed to be a diverse land uses here. You know, integration of housing, job creation, entertainment, you know, recreation. PUDs are supposed to be vibrant, you know, dynamic integration of land uses. I'm the author of the, the comprehensive plan, so I know what the reference meant to the PUD in this section. I, I just have very grave concerns about utilization of PUD tool for what is, I think it's very plain, this is a singular use to be accommodated here. And, and then in terms of the reference utilities, you know, in the context of this overall PUD, utilities have to be accommodated because the, the housing division, the commercial development, industry that comes, all that is, is, is going to be, you know, needing public to service it. So that's why it's allowed in that context. I, I, I have, I didn't write this section, but I, I've got, again, grave concerns that it was envisioned that the primary and only use for a PUD would be a public utility of some sort, like a natural gas plant or a solar, solar array. I, I just, I just think at this point in process, I have a lot of respect for, for planning the developments and the planning that goes into them and the concepts behind them. And, and things like this are a resident setting, setting date. And I, I think this really needs to be carefully considered before we go down this path of a PUD use in this map.
So Jim, if I may, to try and kind of take what you just said and, and make a picture out of it. All right, if one of our previously reviewed subdivisions from earlier in the evening had decided that they would like to, along with building housing, that they would like to incorporate a solar array to help offset the use of electricity of the houses. Okay, it may not be allowed in the R1 or R2, but that might be an ideal time to set up a PUD to say, okay, it, it's not allowed, but we're trying to do this unique thing. We've got housing and we want to incorporate electric generation into the site plan to accommodate for that housing or whatever. Would that be a more appropriate use of a PUD than? Or am I, am I off?
I, I, I think you're going down the right path, yes. Because there are many references in this, in the PUD objectives and the intent to, you know, the affordability and innovation in housing, you know, the various types of housing. You know, whether they be duplexes, multi-family formats, townhouses, what have you. You know, those are the things that are envisioned when you talk about planned unit development. And, and is there integration potentially of, of some complementary current uses, convenience retail? Or, or, you know, some sort of job creation component where the people, you know, that live in the PUD can work in the PUD? That kind of, that's what the development is about. It is, I, I, I just, I just have real concerns about, you know, what is a, a solar generating energy use being deemed the PUD? I, I just have trouble in my mind getting there.
John, I, I think the last PUD we looked at, and I've been here not as you, I think the only one we've approved since I've been on the board was where the house of the Good Shepherd is on Bluebird Road now. That was originally, I believe, approved as a PUD, but never were fully built. You know, and the intent of that was, was mixed use, your housing and then different levels of care, you know, progressing from a nursing home. And then also doctors' offices and retail that cater to the, the residents.
Yeah, that's the one that was down the road from the home of the Good Shepherd.
Oh, I thought that was where the home of the Good Shepherd.
No, no, it was down the road, Sisson Road and Bluebird.
You know, and we, you know, that I think is the only one that we've had in 10 years that's actually met the criteria and been approved.
And that was the last one prior to that was Garcia, I believe.
Yeah, I wasn't around for that one. But, uh, you know, that was a nice mixed, you know, it, it fit, it checked all the boxes.
So, so here's my take on what I'm looking at right now. For me at least, and I'm, you know, I'm just a farmer, okay? I, I pretend to be a planning board member, but to me, what I'm picturing here is I'm picturing a, a solar array plan that then hands off the land that they, they don't need to use for the solar array to the town and leaves the town responsible for the mixed use. Is that? I mean, that's what I'm kind of seeing here.
That was my question about whether or not the, the applicant was intending to provide any of the recreational facility.
Exactly, exactly. So it, the, the development plan that's in front of us is for a solar array for two 5 meg solar arrays. And then there's a, a large portion of land that's being handed off to the town that they're not planning to use. And then there's a lot of potential, but not a lot of plan beyond that.
Well, it looks like several lot line adjustments as well. That's really what it looks like.
The, the other thing I have, I have concerns about is if, if you look at the physical makeup of what will be the town lot, the physical strains on that property are severe. There are some flat areas, but they're encircled by, you know, very steep slope. So I, I just, I, I look at that, I look at the physical makeup of that site, of that parcel. And I can envision, you know, cutting an access road across that slope for anything in there or parking, even if it's for passive recreation. It's going to be a very involved process for any kind of land use on that property, particularly if it's going to involve access and vehicles. So.
And to be honest, we have an R3, which is ag residential. Okay, I mean, it's, it's not quite the R5, but it's still ag residential. So we've taken and put solar panels on pretty much the only land that's developable for either ag or residential from what I can see. And then there was a, a historical recreational component to this particular parcel because of the former golf course that was on it. But I don't foresee that becoming another use. So I don't really see what the other use is in this particular plan at the moment, other than just handing it off.
So we propose, this is the applicant, US Light Energy, we propose the, the other use be recreational. For many of the reasons you stated, a lot of that area to the north in the town property, north of unit A and south and east of unit B is topographically challenging and also has environmental concerns too with the, with the class three stream. So it cannot be developed for many other activities aside from recreational, in our opinion.
Think hiking trails, things like that, things of that.
Exactly.
Not, not necessarily building roads and parking lots in here on, on the, within the, within the ravine areas, the steep areas. Although the area in the southwest corner of the site near the ponds, yeah, there, you could, you could have some more options. Although the area in the southwest corner of the site near the ponds, yeah, you could have some more options there as to what would be developed. You know, so, you know, I think by, you know, saying that the PUD tool should only be used for, you know, vibrant developments, mixed-use developments, to address Mr. Martin's comments, is a little bit of a broad brush for this particular site. When you look at the actual features of the site and the constraints that might preclude that other type of development. You know, so that was also taken into consideration.
See, the thing is, is that my understanding, or my practice at least with PUDs, is PUDs are usually proposed to do something more, all right, something grander than what can be done under the current zoning. And it seems to me that this one is marvelously underwhelming. I mean, we're taking an ag residential potential and basically tying up half of the land in solar panels for the next 25 to 40 years. And then the land that's left, which is mostly ravines and wetlands, is going to be handed over to the town so that if they want to do something with it, they can. And that just doesn't, that doesn't fit what I'm used to seeing of PUDs, not just in our town, but in other people's towns, where PUDs are used to make these dynamic, unique developments that might not fit in just one zoning thing, but they really fit for that particular location. So that's why I'm asking these questions. I'm just trying to get my head around, I guess, why we would do a PUD of this particular type. Not necessarily in this site. I can see why this site might lend itself to a PUD development, but why this one?
This is Ann. I have the same concerns as the other board members and Jim have expressed. And on top of that, the comprehensive plan at this point that we have doesn't designate any particular area for solar power, but this area in particular would seem to be one of the least likely places to place solar panels, as opposed to, let's say, an industrial or manufacturing site or a landfill that doesn't have any other kind of use. In other words, it does seem to, it doesn't make best use of the property in the center of town.
Or even a parcel that's not as easily accessed by good quality roads. I mean, it's, so.
Right.
So there means you can see cows grazing under these panels?
No, no. And even, you know, that's been brought up in the past, this is still agricultural because animals can graze around them. I think we have to give credence to the primary use, not to some proposed possible secondary use. Okay, I mean, if it comes down to it, you have cows or sheep grazing with the solar panels and it comes down to choosing one or the other, what do you think the primary is? The primary is the solar panels. The sheep are gone if it doesn't work out. Okay, so, but I mean, in this case, certainly Section A, Unit A is actually, I would consider valuable farmland. That's farmland that could be farmed. Now, it could be argued that it hasn't been. Its previous use was a golf course. That was a driving range. Okay, and it's been remarked a couple of times tonight that it's been abandoned or let go. But because a parcel is priced out of farmland market, doesn't mean that that isn't still valuable farmland. It could be argued the ravines aren't valuable for farmland, but certainly that field where Unit A is, is still valuable farmland.
So I'm not sure of the history of it being a golf course or the maintenance procedures in place to maintain those properties may affect its viability for farming, you know, whatever chemicals may have been used in the maintenance of that property.
There's nothing, there's nothing on that parcel where Unit A is that would affect its ability to be utilized as agricultural lands again. That I would guarantee. I mean, you can test the soils and check and see if you want. I'm pretty sure you don't want to find out if it's poisoned so bad it can't be used for agriculture. But I'm pretty sure it never was. It was mowed for a driving range. That's the only thing it was mowed for. So obviously, there was infrastructure built for greens and things like that. I don't know if there was irrigation put in or underground wiring for lights or anything for the golf course. But I do know that there was construction for ponds and sand traps and greens and stuff like that that would have to be reclaimed if you wanted to claim it as farmland, but to be honest with you, it could be done. So it's not like it couldn't be used. It could also be used for residential. It's not like it couldn't be used for that purpose. So we're trying to figure out what's the best use, and that's where the PUD comes into place, is when you have a dynamic use that doesn't really fit the zoning, but you want it, you know, it really is a positive for the town or the community or whatever.
Understood. And that's why we stress that it was a temporary development activity here. You know, we've watched this land sit vacant for years now, and I'm sure some of the neighbors have as well. And we felt this was a good use of the property, mainly because of the viable infrastructure nearby that's required to cite these systems. I've heard mention of the industrial parks. That's great in theory, but unless you have the utility infrastructure to receive that power, it's difficult to cite those, any sizable system for a community solar project where the town may think it's best to go. There's other requirements involved to actually make this a successful project and build it. This site has the particular criteria that we would need to make the solar project successful. And I also think the remaining land lends itself well to the recreational use for the town.
I got to ask you on this. I thought when I heard that a solar project was, especially at this magnitude, was proposed for this location, I thought that probably those high voltage power lines were the reason for that being viable.
No, so I'm glad you brought that up. I wanted to make sure we're differentiating between this and some of the other utility scale projects that were proposed. So we are participating at the distribution level, the same lines that run down many of the streets now for three-phase power. This is proposed to take all of the capacity on this circuit, but there likely be available capacity for other projects elsewhere in the town.
Okay.
And speaking to highest and best use, you know, that's definitely a valid consideration. But at this point, this is the highest and best use of the property now. You know, it's languished for 10 years and no other real proposals. So that's sort of the reality of the economics now at this point.
Jim, I don't know what's going on in Town Hall, but it's hard to understand what's going on here.
Yeah, we just had an unexpected visitor.
Okay.
Everyone's okay?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, so if I could just address one thing, a comment was just made that, you know, the land, once again, it's comment was made that the land has sat vacant for 10 years. It's important to note that it didn't sit vacant for 10 years because, you know, like, nobody could come up with any possible use for it. It was for sale. There was a pretty interesting price on it, okay? And this is an argument that's used a lot of times to take farmland out of production. Well, it's been for sale for 10 years and nobody bought it. Well, if it's not for sale for its use or a price that's reasonable for its use, it's not going to sell. All right, so if you put a piece of land up for sale for $20,000 an acre, it's going to be hard pressed for a farmer to buy that land and farm it. All right, so, I mean, that's neither here nor there. Nothing says this land has to stay in agriculture. And there is a, you know, a proposal in front of us for a PUD for some other purpose. But certainly the fact that there's no other use for it is not reasonable. There certainly is. Maybe not at the price that it sold for.
Okay, Board, what do you want to do?
If I understood earlier, we are going to have to do a public hearing before we can make a recommendation.
That's correct.
So would you like a motion to schedule a public hearing for March 15th, 7:20?
Let me pop in here. You would set the public hearing if you feel that you have all the information you need in front of you to make a determination. And then you would go for the public hearing. If there's anything more you want the applicant to provide to you or questions you have for the applicant, you can ask them and then decide whether you want to do the public hearing.
Yeah, this is Ann. There are a couple of things. There are a couple of things I would want to know. Looking through the application material, it looked like there may be half a dozen or so various entities involved in this project. I think it would be worthwhile for everyone to know exactly who they are and what their roles are. In addition, I think that relative to the generation of power, the geographic range of consumers that might benefit from it. And in addition, whether or not there'd be negative impacts on the real property tax base.
Well, and then the other thing, I think that, I think the application in many ways is very thorough, highly detailed in many ways. To me, the gaping hole, though, that is left unresolved is visual impact. And there's a lot of ways to undertake that from varying vantage points and project the view, you know, from the highway, from the neighboring properties. And so you get an idea what this is going to look like instead of just seeing it in the narrative description. So I think a visual impact assessment, highly detailed, you know, rendered, that kind of a thing from various vantage points. So we get a realistic expectation in the public as to what this would look like in its complete condition.
So if I may have screen sharing access, I'm happy to share with you some renderings that we've prepared for tonight's meeting and to get your feedback if you feel the right area.
That you, Chris?
That's, this is Mike speaking.
You want to share the screen?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hold on here, I gotta.
While Jim is doing that, I just want to advise the board and the applicant, one of the other things that the board can do, if it wants, is reach out to county planning or any other, you know, private or part, public partnership or entity to see if there's any thoughts they may have. When it goes to the town board, if it goes to the town board on a favorable recommendation, the town board is actually going to be the lead agency here that does that. So don't worry about Seeker at this point. I know Ann's probably thinking about that. And so I just wanted you to know that, you know, there's a lot of information you can ask for from the applicant or from county planning or from any other place.
So Carla, could we not only ask Saratoga County, but even state agencies like Nazarra?
You can. I'm pretty sure Nazarra is fairly familiar with this project.
So they might be able to give us guidance.
You can ask whoever, you can, you can reach out to any other, any entity you'd like. But this wouldn't be like a reaching out for interested involved parties for seeker purposes, was my point.
Right, it would be for informational purposes.
Correct.
So Carla, you're saying the town board would handle the entire Seeker?
Town board would do Seeker, yep, because they would be a lead agency. Because they're the ones that are approving the law. It would be a local law, so they would be the ones in charge of it.
Board, you have to think of it this way. In order to be the lead agency or think of anything in Seeker, you have to have the authority to approve. And we do not have the authority to approve a PUD that's a reserve of the town board, so we cannot do it. If it's referred to us later on for a site plan, then yes, we have authority to do and would require them to do a seeker review because now we have the authority to approve a site plan. But at this juncture, PUD, no.
I guess we would just request the action to be viewed as one project, the PUD and the site plan as one seeker action. So that might not change who would determine themselves to be lead agent, but I feel like that would be most appropriate.
What we would do, Chris, is a coordinated review with the planning board and the town board.
Thank you.
And this is Mike from U.S. Light Energy. Thank you for giving me the screen sharing capability. Just wanted to pull up some of the renderings that we have prepared for tonight's meeting. Starting with this overview map, we focused on project area for Unit A, specifically because that appears to be the one with the most likelihood of being visible. There's a substantial tree line on Unit B, nearly all sides that will prevent that from being viewed from any of the surrounding homes. So we focused our rendering efforts on Unit A. And I'd just like to start with a general overview of the entrance going into the existing facility, the old barn and town structure. This is shown at plant height. We proposed a screening line of Northern Bayberry, Dwarf Blue Spruce, and a Silky Dogwood, all of which are suitable for the environment that they're being proposed in. And this is what it would look like at planted height. And we've taken a liberty to extrapolate that five years from now, what it could look like more mature, which would, obviously, you'd see the increased growth and it further shields from view. Due to the topography of the site, there will be some areas of the array visible, but it's largely shielded from view by this vegetation and fence, which we've chosen black in color to further minimize the view. Another view that we've taken is coming from the other direction. This is also, again, shown at plant height. These are the solar panels. And I can get my screen to work here. Five years later, a little bit more mature and wider. So I wanted to bring those up to the board's attention. I know there was a specific question on visual rendering. Do you feel that these areas adequately address your concern or are there other areas that you have concerns from?
Can you show View 2 again?
Yep. Sorry.
I go by there a lot, and it just seems to be a steeper hill than what that looks like. I don't know.
So this was built off a 3D model representing the topography in the back. So as you get closer to the rear of the property, you're actually seeing the panels a little higher due to that slope going upwards. Keep in mind that this is a relatively low rack height compared to what you may see at the Town Hall and compared to what you may see at usual utility scale projects or smaller projects. Being a single-axis tracker allows us a lower height than the typical fixed tilt system, maxing out at approximately nine feet, once they're oriented upwards.
This is shown with them, I'll say, at noon, sun's directly overhead.
That's approximately right, yep, just about. It is tilted a little bit here.
And Jerry, I would argue, I would argue that if you looked off to the right in that view.
Yeah, I'd see the hill.
You'd see more of the panels above it because of the topography.
Agreed.
So over, more towards this direction?
Yeah, I mean, that would be obvious.
Yeah, I think that would be a big, that'll be a big concern, right? People are going to be coming into town, they're going to come around that curve, and what are they going to be presented with? And it's, this is kind of beyond it to a degree, you know, you're... Because the thing is, usually when I'm in there, I can see that house.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm, I'm a little confused by what this view is because, you know, like I said, I go by there a lot.
The other thing I would suggest is if we start getting into this level of detail, right now, we're kind of at this, in my opinion, where this somewhat philosophical stage and, you know, objectives are being met, purpose and intent of all that kind of a thing. When we start getting into nitty-gritty site plan stuff like visual analysis, you know, I've done some of it, I've seen some of it, but I also know enough to know what I don't know. And my point is, we need to engage a third-party expert, you know, and look at the criteria for a reasonable visual analysis and gain their assistance. That would be my suggestion, gain their assistance in going. and and gain their assistance. That would be my suggestion, gain their, uh, their assistance in going through a full analysis. Are we getting it from the right vantage points, you know, um, correct days, correct times of year, leaf on, leaf off conditions, all those kind of things? And make sure that, you know, that it's being done in a manner that's going to be useful and gives information we're looking for.
I think that's in a direction, yes. Board, do I have a motion for this community solar project, rural community solar project to engage the services of a consultant for the visual analysis?
Chairman, do we, do we need to do that now if we're only looking at it as meeting the conditions of the PUD?
I'm not so sure you do. I I'm not suggesting now, but I'm saying before this dispense with, you know, in this review cycle by the planning board and the town board, these are the types of, you know, analysis that I think the public's going to want to see.
Okay. We're making, we're making recommendations for the town board at this point. And there, because right now we're being asked to review it under the light of if it is or isn't, you know, a qualified PUD.
Exactly.
All right, got it.
So the question in the discussion is, is there anything else that we need in order to help us make the determination of whether we want to give a favorable approval to this as a an effective use of a PUD?
Prior to setting the public hearing.
Exactly.
Right. So if we're talking about visual analysis and stuff like that, that'd be judging it as a site plan review, not a PUD.
Yeah, I think that's a, yeah, I I would agree, Eric. I don't think that's, that's Jim is asking you to do that right now. It's just something he wants you to think about.
Oh, sure.
Because it's probably something that the public is going to bring up at the public hearing, either public hearing. It's also something the town board could require at its stage.
So we could, we could ask before a public hearing that uh, we get input from the county and NYSERDA. And we might also ask the applicant to give more detailed information on the various parties involved in this project, because again, there are a number of them. And I would like to know what the real property tax impact is. I don't know if that's something the applicant uh, provides, or Carla, is there some other way of figuring that out?
I can actually address that, um, just, you know, uh, in a vanilla sense. US Light Energy is going to be required to enter into a pilot agreement with the town. Um, and I believe, and gentlemen, correct me if I'm wrong, the school district has requested and the county maybe has requested the same.
So this is Mark Richardson. I I appreciate you giving me access. I'm the CEO of US Light Energy. So uh, it is true that the, we've had responses, I believe, from all three taxing jurisdictions, Carla, that that the pilot would be required.
Right.
And and there was, there's been a question about the various entities involved. Uh, I'm happy to to describe those relationships. If this is appropriate time to do that. So, um, US Light Energy began developing this project with an option to purchase, uh, about two years ago. The option basically timed out while the town was working on their moratorium, uh, was working under moratorium for solar law. We made the decision, uh, with our partners who who own the rights to this project. The partners are, uh, Energy Impact Partners. We created, uh, property holdings to purchase the property together. So the entity of property holdings who actually owns this property now is a joint venture between US Light Energy uh, and, uh, Energy Impact Partners, effectively, who is the owner of the, of the project. The two other entities that you may see are USLE, uh, PV1 and PV2. Those are basically just holding companies. Uh, that's, it's common practice to create a special purpose entity to own a particular project. Uh, those are the only entities that that are involved with this. And so if that, if if I'm happy to go into more detail if you have other specific questions about those relationships, uh, but hopefully that that describes it. Uh, US Light Energy is a, is a local company. We're we're located in Latham. We're actually one of the few solar project developers working on community solar, or frankly, utility scale solar projects that's actually based here in New York. Uh, and I'd like to speak just briefly, if I may, to job creation. Uh, these projects do create jobs. My company, in fact, employs at least 15 people. Uh, we would not have a company if it weren't for projects like this. There are dozens, at least, of construction jobs are created during the construction process. Uh, companies like CT Mail, uh, are employed repeatedly for engineering. Um, you see the kind of detail and effort that's gone into the site plan creation, as well as the visual renderings and all the other planning uh, that we've done. So I do think it has positive economic impact on on the region, uh, if not necessarily specifically long-term jobs for the town of Moreau. However, uh, I would say that the, the the impetus for creating a recreational facility came, frankly, from some conversations that I had with the neighbors uh, who who recommended to me that they would really like to see perhaps an equestrian location or a cross-country ski facility or something like that. And rather than try and be proscriptive about, um, what that recreational facility would look like, we really felt that the town would frankly welcome, uh, the donation of nearly 100 acres of potentially, um, valuable recreational land. Uh, if, you know, uh, if that's not the case, we can certainly probably find another, another use for that that is perhaps, uh, vibrant, uh, perhaps it involves home development, but frankly, we we felt that this was a, what I would call a win-win uh, from a development standpoint. Uh, and one of the board members mentioned that, you know, this may have been priced out of, uh, the reach of of farmers, uh, which is probably true, but the fact is, it's, it's, it's only a small portion of it, which could be used for either agriculture or other kind of development. And much of it is frankly unusable, as we've pointed out a number of times, for any kind of development. In fact, the National Grid road is bifurcated by a ravine. That road doesn't even make it from one side of the property to the other. Additionally, uh, there's already infrastructure on this property in the, in the, the form of transmit, high-powered, high-voltage transmission lines that are there forever. Even though we're not using those, we believe that it sets a bit of a precedent for the potential, um, use of this type of this, type of a, uh, for this type of development, rather, solar specific development. Uh, we really take a lot of pride in trying to help the state of New York meet its CLCPA goals. And frankly, uh, there are not very many good sites that are both buildable and proximate to utility infrastructure. Uh, these are a bit like a needle in a haystack or a Goldilocks type of a scenario, uh, where these projects, uh, are are very difficult to cite. They're very difficult to make work economically. Um, and we really felt that in this case, the the highest and best use for this, uh, for the next, uh, couple of decades would be to to help meet the CLCPA, the climate goals of New York State, and also provide an opportunity for the town to take advantage of, uh, a former recreational site uh, that 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 the town could frankly turn into uh, a really, I think, quite useful and benefit, community benefit, uh, provide a community benefit that that would not otherwise exist, potentially with other kinds of private development. So I appreciate you letting me, uh, take the time to speak about that, and I'm happy to elaborate on any of those things.
So back to our motion at hand. We have a motion for a public hearing. And we had a second, and our discussion was whether we had enough of what we need to hold it, right? Well, I don't know. I made the motion. I thought we had a second because we were making, um, we're having a discussion on it. I could be wrong.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second for us to make this clear?
John, when would you have this hearing?
Well, the motion I had on the floor was to have the hearing on March 15th. 7:20. Remember, Mike, it can be late. It can't be earlier.
I learned that one tonight, John.
Looks like motion's going to die to the line. One second.
That happens sometimes.
I'd be inclined to John, I'd be inclined to push it off some because we're already loading up on the 15th. And I would expect that we would have, um, public involvement in this one, that, um, it's visible enough that uh, giving enough notice and, um, giving people enough time to speak might be, you know, more important than some of these smaller projects that don't attract a lot of attention.
That's one of the reasons.
Day would be April 19.
It's one of the reasons, Ann, I was asking if I thought, if we thought that maybe the March meeting would also have to be split.
Yeah.
I have no doubt that there'll be, there'll be, um, public activity with this proposal. So since there was no, there was no second on my motion, if somebody would like to propose a motion for a different time, or nobody wants to propose one, and that's okay too.
Jim, what was the alternate date?
Uh, the April meeting is the 19th, April 19th.
In the interim, could we also ask the county and NYSERDA for their written input?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do we want from NYSERDA?
Apparently, they are aware of this project and they may have some thoughts on it. Am I correct with that, Carla, or is that not worthwhile?
I believe that they're aware of it, um, but I, I don't know what information they would give you with respect to it. Um, I've been working, um, with NYSERDA with respect to the solar law that's, uh, the town is presenting that you've all been looking at. But, um, and so that's where I've heard that they've learned about this project. I don't know if they are in contact, and maybe the applicant can advise if they're in contact with the applicant. Um, maybe they, maybe the applicant has information that could help you, um, decide whether you need to go to NYSERDA. But I, I agree. I don't know what you would want to ask them.
Okay, then why don't we stick with the county?
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think NYSERDA would have any input relative to whether this should or shouldn't be allowed to move forward as a PUD.
Yeah, I doubt they'd get involved in a local issue.
Okay, I'm fine with that. So, uh, why don't we ask if the county can give us some input uh, in advance of that April, uh, meeting and set the public hearing for that date? I make a motion to that effect.
I have one more question for your motion, if I can.
Can't get to a second.
It's okay. I just, just before, I just, what I wanted to know is, I mean, we're, we're going to go forth and we're looking at this and we're, so we're being asked whether or not we're going to give a favorable opinion on this. And I, I guess the thing that that keeps swirling around in my mind, I think it's similar to what Ann was asking, is how do we know if the town wants this property?
Well, should we ask the town?
That would be another point that could be addressed before the public hearing. We could, that question could be posed to the, the town board or the supervisor.
And I think that's a very important question because if the town doesn't want the property, then, you know, it's DOA.
I can let you know that the town board has a meeting tomorrow night, so if you want to pose the question to them, um, you could probably shoot an email to the town board, um, and they could discuss it tomorrow.
Well, status my alarm goes off at 3:30 tomorrow morning. The odds of me hitting a town board meeting tomorrow are getting slimmer by the minute.
No, 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 that's not what I meant. I meant the planning board could send a letter to the town board.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that. I would just like to know if the town wants the property. That would be, you know, a major consideration in my mind.
Although I have to, you know, whether the town wants the property or doesn't want the property, doesn't really go into your determination of whether this meets the criteria of a PUD. It would be something good to know, but it's not in the criteria.
Okay, so, so then the, so then the question for us is simply, does it meet the criteria of a PUD?
Yeah, I mean, even if the town, even if the town wants it, it may not meet the pri, the criteria of a PUD.
All right, I, I misunderstood that then, okay? Never mind. Oh, yeah, I'm good with your, go, go.
So can I second her motion, please?
Actually, seconded his motion.
Who was that? Is that John?
Yes, that was me.
Ann made it, John gave the second.
Motion has been made and seconded to a whole public hearing for rural community solar project for the third Monday, you know, April. Will be seconded for further discussion. And again, we need to give a secretary a break this, this time. Unless not too controversial. Was it favor I?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I have one further request.
Jim, will you ask the county? Jim, could you ask the, thank you.
Yeah, and you, you'll be copied on the message.
Okay, thank you.
This is Mike from US Light Energy. Thank you very much for everyone's time. Just wanted to add. I just wanted to ask if there's anything else required of the applicant at this time for submission. Doesn't, didn't sound like it. Just wanted to confirm.
Nothing that I can think of.
Nothing here either.
And before we wrap.
Thank you.
I would like to request counsel.
Yes, sir.
Address whether, in your opinion, legally, this project meets the requirements of PUD from town.
I am happy to put together a memo for the town, for the planning board.
Great, thank you.
That would be appreciated.
Unfortunately, I think, yes. An exhaustive agenda for this evening. Mr. Martin, do you have anything further for us?
No, I do not.
You do not? In that case, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Is it 3:30 yet, Jerry? It's going to be ugly.
I second that.
What if, what if nobody seconds that one?
I second it. This is Ann.
Motion made second. Was it favor I?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. Motion carries.
Good night, everybody.
Aye.
Hi.